All right, I'm called over the Reg. 80 city council from number 26. Can I have a question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any motion in a second for the agenda?
I'll motion, I'll say.
Okay, discussion.
We need to add an item, right?
Oh, yes.
Do we want that in consent, or did you want that as a separate?
Yep, Mayor members of council, I have one resolution, resolution 67, 2024, that was sent out at about 3:30 today, unfortunately, sorry about the delay. It came up during the title search related to the property purchased on 117th Avenue, that we have a trail easement, it's about 20 feet wide, I believe, on the property that we are looking to purchase or looking to close on. So council needs to approve, basically vacating that easement because we own the whole property, we no longer need a trail. Oh, and it was never recorded, so. If I'd like to add that to J1, it's J1.
J1, okay. And I have a question about... Item C. So are we kind of going on the fact that... That your budget's gonna be approved?
Kind of.
Keep pounding on the door.
And that was...
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor members of council, the reason why that was on the agenda today is not to pay for it today, but so we can get an invoice. The reason for that is then we bypass a 5% increase we can see after January 1st. Let's buy the purchase equipment of next year anyways. If we can get it 5% cheaper, or at least not have to worry about any price increases, we'd like to do that. Again, we're not looking to purchase it today, just getting the invoice, and you will see a purchase for it in 2025.
I think, process-wise, item C and item J should both get moved to after item P.
Sure.
I tend to agree.
All right. Where do you want to move them to?
After the budget discussion.
B1, B2, C, and J. Okay, given those changes, and the addition of J1. Any more discussion?
I just had one question on item H. Was a change order for a wellhouse two, Marty, we have to add some bollards by a generator? And I'm not questioning that, I guess it should have been on there. But it mentions that Conexus is... Is whose requiredness, is that Conexus service area?
Yes, it is, that area, yeah.
But the well...
Well 4 is not.
Well 4 is Excel.
Yeah, it's a split right down...
The lines on my backyard, if that makes you feel better.
Yeah.
Literally.
It splits River Hills right down the middle.
Right down the middle, yep.
Okay, that just was... Just didn't seem right to me, that was my question.
Okay, so we're voting on the overall agenda, any more questions about the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Curious, five to zero, and now we're on to consent.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
That's okay.
All motion that we approve A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J1.
I think I got the right ones.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Anybody have an answer? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Consent, curious, five to zero, and we are on to open forum. Open forum, limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. State your name and address, no council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff.
Marsha Grover, 1132 from Brooklyn, I live over there by Dean's Country Manor. And I'm here again. You know, they say that people need to hear and see something at least three times to remember it. So here I am again. I'm here to state that the south end of town does not need a sixth gas station/convenience store, lest you forget, there's already one by the elementary school, one by the trailer park, one on 113th, one next to Target, and one soon to be on Interstate 94. Of course, let's not forget Targets right there, too, and all of these places are within two to five miles of Dean's Country Manor. Your car won't even warm up by the time you get to any one of those stations. Maybe you should do some planning for the north end of town, where all they have is a bar and a liquor store. Or maybe those residents can give the builders of these new houses a crash course on how to get along for one night without a loaf of bread. Because if you drive home from work passing gas stations and convenience stores, and then complain about having to drive to a store two miles away, you might need that crash course. Need I remind you that the plan for this gas station/convenience store is right next to a big old holding pond? And every time it rains, and every time it snows, and all that garbage and pollution will run right into that holding pond, and then into the groundwater, and then where does it go? Every single house existing right now in that area has a well. We drink that water, we cook with that water, we clean our homes and ourselves with that water. How can the city say that we will not be affected? The existing holding ponds have already caused a watery mess in that neighborhood from new construction. And what about all the lights and all the noise? Do we need to sacrifice everything for people who don't even live there yet? We have lived here 52 years, doesn't that count for anything? Many others in this neighborhood have lived here a long, long time, too. What about them? What about us? Another point we have is that there are already so many empty buildings and warehouses. Do we really, honestly, need more? The motto of this city is "Live the Difference." So what exactly is the difference? We're cramming houses in worse than Maple Grove, or Champlin, or Rogers, or any other city around here. What is the difference? What is the difference? At the bottom of your own agenda, it says, "The City of Dayton's mission is to promote a thriving community and to provide residents with a safe and pleasant place to live while preserving our rural character." What is the difference? You're not preserving the rural character. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is anybody online?
There's nobody online, Mayor.
Cool, all right, let's move off to staff consultant council updates. Zach?
Yes, Mayor members of council, one update that I have for you tonight is we have Holly Dayton, which is our parade event that we have, and other Christmas-type festivities in front of City Hall here, that is next Thursday, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, starting at, I think it's six o'clock, six o'clock. We would like City Hall to be able to be shut down at 2:00 to help with that. We have an all-hands-on-deck staff, basically, that's able to try to get that thing ready to go for people, and we want to make sure the residents get the best quality possible, so I'm politely asking you if we're going to close City Hall at 2:00 next Thursday.
I have no problems with that.
We're good?
Yeah. Sounds good.
You didn't even have to politely ask.
I know. I politely did.
Appreciate that, you did.
Anything else? Marty?
Mayor and council, a couple of things tonight. The hazardous materials at the old Public Workshop have been land-packed and are all safe now, ready, we're waiting for shipping. That was going to be in the next week or so for those who come and be taken away. The tanks, the fuel tank and the waste oil tank have been cleaned out, they are going to be picked up. I'm waiting for a date for the pickup on that, we've been negotiating on price for that for a little while, but that should be in the next week or so as well. So hopefully, all that material will be out there within the next two weeks. Wellhouse four, I had an unfortunate update with that today.
No.
I knew that. I agree with you, Mayor. So I met with Tral today on site, and there was some confusion at their end. The tech that was looking at the project, used Google Maps, was thinking it was well five, which is a submersible well, wasn't in a wellhouse. So that is a whole different procedure for going in through the roof, and that's a different piece of machinery that is currently out on another site, so I'm working on them to expedite that to get it to us as quick as we can. The good news is that they think, from what they're looking at today, and with this other piece of equipment, they can get the material out there within a month. So rather than the two-month period, we're expecting it to be a shorter period of time, but I don't know what the timeline is, so I'm getting there. I stress that we need it as soon as possible.
Given our history, I was thinking there was worse bad news.
And how much is the change order, how much is the change order that you'll surprise us with?
I don't know yet, Scott, I'll let you know first.
Yeah.
So just time. That's still unfortunate, because you're still down, right? I mean, we're down to one well still in that system.
Yeah, that's the downside of it, and I did stress to them that, you know, we've only got the one well that we're running off, although the water usage, we're in the comfortable range of running on well two, it's still not comfortable, yeah.
From a redundancy standpoint, like, it's literally...
The next one, all three are up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, I have one update, I believe the fire truck that we have given to Ukraine should be shipping out here shortly, and so when it does arrive, or prior to departing, upon arrival, I'm hopeful to get some pictures of that, so when it arrives in the new station.
Paul?
Evening, Mayor, members of the council, just to let you know, Officer Johnson is back in the United States, and back in Minnesota, so he'll be ramping up to get going full-time come January 1st again. Officer Byrne started a week ago, he is already on his own, being shadowed, so we are currently going to be up to full staff coming up, so that's good news. We've had some traffic complaints in the area, one is with the new stop sign at Dayton River Road and North Diamond Lake Road. Another one has been 117th. As you know, I've restructured some of my organization, and we have a community response unit, that is both investigations and doing traffic details, so we have put them, along with patrol officers, out on both areas, so they've been doing extra traffic duties in those two areas.
Do you... Do you... Has there been enough investigation done to find out what happened at... With that fatality on Diamond?
We're still waiting on the accident reconstruction from State Patrol.
Okay, was... Can you tell at this point whether it was related to the traffic change, or...
No, it was not.
It was not?
Okay. Nothing? John?
The EDA is requesting that the city replace the eight monument signs, so I know we just discussed cutting items from the budget, and I believe this was one of them, that's one. No updates here.
No update from me?
Scott? I got nothing.
Nothing from me?
Where are we at with the... Has there been any changes with the traffic facility? Is that still on?
The federal grant we're talking, the HUD stuff you're talking?
Yes, all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, so the Willhut Room Plant Grant, we are still working through the final stages, we had a final call with SHPO yesterday, we had to get the final language related to that memorandum of understanding, or pretty much everyone you want to use, which gives us, they did extended, they didn't say you wanted to do it in this year, they said, "Give yourself some more time," which is three years, so it doesn't have to be done prior to us getting the funding, it just has to make sure we understand that we need to get those things done. Again, it's nothing that's drastic to overall to the City of Dayton, but just so you get a lot through. What happens then is we get the information back, we submit it then to the federal government, and we're able to post for 15 days, essentially waiting for comment. And that's the, I think I mentioned in the last weekly update, is that we do have the ability to let MAGNY know early, if we'd like to do that, and kind of run a little bit of risk of... So MAGNY Construction is the one who is doing the work, they said that they need at least a 12-week lead time in order to get back on site, they have to order parts and pieces and get their subcontractors, they have been great to work with so far, and we appreciate their willingness to work with us with this, so we're going to have to work with them, their little bit of delay, so it's going to be up to the council. As soon as I hear word that we're actually submitting and stuff, I will most certainly reach out to the council. I would anticipate it will be next week, by the time we actually post, so it'll be shortly after the council meeting, of the next council meeting, then I'd be able to give you guys an update if we're going to post this day. So it takes about a week to get it in the paper. If we submit it Thursday, it goes to following, or Friday, then it goes to following Thursday, so there's a little bit of delay there, but the council will be able to have a little bit of risk if they'd like to do something before the end of the publication period, I don't anticipate any changes, but...
I would just hate for it to fall back out, and then we look like that kind of customer then.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's the optics of...
That's correct.
That's what scares me away from saying, like, "Yeah, let's do it early," but...
I would agree, yeah. So like I said, it's...
The early buys us...
Yeah, early buys is about, buys is about four weeks. It's about a month, so it's a month savings.
I mean, we're already shooting for the end of next summer, right?
We're shooting for the end of the year next year now, based on the three-month delay. If there wasn't a three-month delay, we'd be shooting at the end of, that would be about a hammer. Now with a three-month delay, we're talking end of next year, you know, as unfortunate as it is, we're going to do our best to keep moving forward as fast as possible, but...
I'd rather it just be done right.
Like I said, I will provide an update, there's no way it'll be done before the 10th, between either information given to the federal government or posting it, so I will give an update to the council at the 10th meeting, if you'd like to make a decision on letting MAGNY know early, or just leaving it until essentially the end of the posting period.
Okay.
All good, just time is the only downfall.
Dave?
Nothing really for me, I am glad to hear that we are moving ahead with the cleanup at Public Works. That's been something I've been a little bit concerned about for some time, so I'm really happy to see it happen. I was kind of disappointed to hear there was still fuel in that tank, but not hearing that it was leaking, so we probably dodged a bullet there.
Yeah, I was surprised how much fuel there was in there, it wasn't there when they pumped it out, I got a feeling there may be some water in, yeah, some rainwater got in there as well to pump that up a bit.
Yeah, anyway, I'm glad that it's happening, it's overdue. That's all I got.
Yeah. All right, let's go on to item K.
It is the planning and zoning show tonight, so it's...
It is, it is.
Thank you, so this is a request to amend the interim use permit for an event center for Fisher Farms, it's located 16900 North Diamond Lake Road. This project had received an interim use permit for an event center in 2023 for tented events, the intent at that time was once the owner wanted to build a permanent building that they would apply for an interim use permit for, or to amend the interim use permit for a permanent facility. So the owner is planning on building a permanent facility in 2025, which requires the interim use. Critical issues with this include, there's a better picture, completion of the stormwater pond that serves the parking lot, so this is a requirement of the 2023 interim use permit, and then as well as the access on North Diamond Lake Road, so North Diamond Lake Road is a county road. Once that entrance ceases to be functional, in the opinion of Hennebun County, the county has the ability of requiring it to be removed and then replaced for, yeah, it'll say replaced onto Lawndale. And there's no timetable with this, it's just intended to be temporary, to put clarity on it. With the event center, the permanent, I refer to the map here, the tented events are intended to occur in this location, this is the parking lot that is completed, and then the new structure will be built northwest of the parking lot, so this is kind of the high point of the property. Yeah, don't want that. Right around this area here, so it overlooks the larger property. The building itself is around 9,000 square feet, I'll note, I'm leaning on Gary a little bit, that anything that is over 5,000, or 5,000 square feet, or larger, or 100 persons does require a fire sprinkler system. And I'll say the planning commission recommended approval for this. Still questions?
I've got some, but anybody else want to go first? All right. Page 87 of the packet talks about... Hold on here. Item 5. City staff may require additional parking, what is, I mean...
So the owner has stated that at most, there could be up to 500 people on the property, so whether it's both the event center or inside or outside. The event center ordinance requires one parking stall per two people, so 500 guests would equal 250 parking, the existing parking lot that's there is not big enough for that, so the intent is, and the way it's worded, it's a little arbitrary, but the short answer is if there's not enough parking, it gives the staff the ability of saying, "You need more."
And... What was the discussion regarding grass for parking? At the planning commission?
When the events, oh, let me back up and tell the story.
Okay, go ahead.
So in the code, when we wrote the code in 2023, the code requires that there be an improved surface for parking. Fisher Farms was the first permit in, and I guess my interpretation is we have a tendency to be a little...
Aggressive.
A little strict on the first one in, and then we kind of learn from that and loosen up a little bit.
Are we gonna then correct the...
It's up to the council.
Yeah, because grass to me is fine.
So Fisher Farms was the first event center, then came Dean's Pumpkin Patch, and then Magnus Center. Dean's and Magnus both use grass.
Okay, that's what I was looking at, so we're looking at changing that ordinance at some point. I mean, otherwise, variances, right? Otherwise, we have a kind of a mess, but...
Correct, so, and I would look at, there's a bigger question of, is there anything else you'd like to change on the ordinance, too?
Oh, sure. Number eight. To the greatest extent possible, well, I mean, I read that and I'm reading, I don't know what that meant. I would just, I would think it would just be to get it out of the red way, right away.
In, to try to put it in the context, when this went to the planning commission in 2023, the intent, I'm going off of memory, at some point, North Diamond Lake Road's going to be white, you have no idea when or by how much, so the intent is that for Fisher Farms to make whatever improvements as far away from the road as possible, so that there's as less of an impact on North Diamond Lake Road right away.
Okay. Number 12. It says... Wait a minute here. I had a question about the sign ordinance, and I referenced 12, except...
It's got nothing to do with signs on this one.
Yeah, there's nothing about signs in there. I guess the question I had was... Well, without seeing that, I can't ask the question. All right, so let's move on. Number 10. That had to do with... Again, I think there was discussion at the planning commission as to what to do with this. This would put it, that amplified outdoor music could be good to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday.
Yes.
So, and I know there was some discussion about when you have exceptions like this, that each event would be... Would get a large assembly permit, but I think there was another mitigator there, and I just don't remember what they put in, what they talked about. Having them come back all the time with the form to have us approve seems kind of a bit much, but...
So the intent of the event center ordinance was to avoid the large, or kind of the large assembly license, so that here's one permit, you have to figure out, you know, it more relies on the, having an emergency management plan, so that when you think of anything that could go wrong, you know, here's my plan, I'm doing this once, I don't have to come back five times a year.
And there was also discussion of some limit of maybe having it a couple times to allow them to... Blow past the ordinance, but I don't know where that ended up either. So this basically says... That it's, it would be an exception to the noise ordinance.
Does that thing, the noise ordinance is seven, it's seven, it's seven, 10 o'clock.
Is it 10 on weekends?
It's typical.
It's nine to nine, that was nine to nine on weekends and seven to seven on weekends.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too, but, I mean, not too hung up on it, but it could be, it seems like there's an inconsistency there, that's all. And maybe we have to, we still have some tweaking to do with the activity...
This would be the time to do it.
Question I would have there with the 10 o'clock timeframe, there's other activities that go past 10, or there has been. So are we talking of variance, if there's a particular event that goes past 10, or are we shutting it down?
No, I think what we've said in the past was they would fill out, they would do...
Would be notified.
A permit?
Yeah.
And...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in the past, each organization that would come to council and request an extension of the noise ordinance.
That's what I thought.
If they go past 10, or so.
Right, right.
I think they, okay, so the, says the noise ordinance is still 10, but it says that musical instruments, phonographs, stereo systems, other such devices should not be heard past the property line. So, I mean, it kind of depends how you look at it, I guess.
Yeah.
It's going to be pretty tough.
So what about, did you redo?
Big sound law.
Okay, so, are we over here with the way that is?
I'm fine with the way through, okay.
My concern is just having it late all the time. I mean, the neighbors that live around there, I mean, we personally have dealt with neighbors that play loud music and want to play loud music until 10:00 p.m., and we've got a five-year-old we were trying to put down at the time and couldn't, because the music was blaring, so I think it would need to be some system in there, if it's a one-off occasion, I think that's fine, but I think on the regular, to have every single week, there'd be music, if I was a neighbor, I'd be upset, too, and I know it's not proposed that it will happen every single week, and I understand that, but it's there, it could, right? So I don't know how, I don't know the best way to do it, but that's my opinion, I don't know, around the, if we're building a barn to have events in, you can have music indoors pass in, right? But outdoor music is going to carry much further than indoor music is. So, that's my thought on the outdoor music piece, is that I don't know if it regularly needs to be till 10:00 p.m.
During the week, right?
No.
I agree, I think you have to have some timeframe, but if you have an event that's an exception, I mean, hopefully, someday, if we get an amphitheater at Stevens, we have to, you know, we might have an 11:00 p.m. concert there, we might.
And you might piss off a bunch of neighbors that live right over there, too, because their kids are trying to go to bed and you got music...
It's happened before, so I mean, I don't doubt that it'll happen again.
So this did come up at the planning commission, I just don't remember what they said, what their, what their options were.
They wanted them to come back, right, without paying a fee to get the exception, basically.
Yes, for the large assembly permit.
Yeah, but the point came up is that, I mean, we're talking about every weekend for the summer. Would they still come up every weekend and have us approve?
Potential.
But then if it's happening every weekend, we can say, "Listen, that's a little bit much," or if the neighbors don't have any problems and no one's complaining about it, then, okay, fine. I mean, I have no problem with the indoor music till whenever, that doesn't bother me.
Yeah.
At all.
It's not a problem.
It's in the barn, it's fine, that's what the event center's there for, it'll be insulated, it makes sense.
Wasn't there a discussion around like an allowance at one point, like giving them like three events where they get to do that? But anything above that, like they said they had to come in? I don't remember, maybe it's a completely different topic, I thought.
No, that's come up a couple of times, I just don't think anything's been drilled down.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like we still have some work to do on this, but it sounds like, what do you think, David?
You know, I think that I'm okay with the noise thing. It's fixing a problem we haven't had yet, and so I'm not as concerned about it. There was another piece, maybe I didn't, wasn't clear to me what, what it is. And it's number three on page ninety. It says, it's understood that site improvements related to this application are limited to the grading construction of a parking area along North Diamond Lake Road, with building construction to take place at a later date, presumably as part of a separate application. I thought this was primarily about adding a permanent building.
Yeah, so the memorandum that you're reading is from twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that was the original.
Oh.
That was the original memo from our Santa group.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
It makes more sense now.
I was reading to that going, wait, this is.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, because although I thought we were talking about a building and sure we're not, so, okay, thank you.
So are we, are we saying that item ten is not an issue on page eighty-eight or eighty-seven? Or, I mean, I.
You could ask the applicant, too, I know that they are here, if they plan on having events every single weekend or not. That way the council could get some sort of feel and, you know, I don't know, say. Comfort level with it, or if you want to limit a number of, you know, times that they can do it in a year.
You're party animal, you.
Name and address.
Amanda Fisher, here with one six nine zero zero, North Diamond Lake Road. The likelihood anytime soon that there'll be events every single weekend, very slim. I mean, we talk about summertime, we talk about movie nights, outdoors, those can't even start until nine o'clock, when the sun goes down.
Right, yeah.
And I don't think there's a film projector in existence that will powerful, that will beat past the sun. So those start at nine, they don't end until ten thirty, if it's a short movie.
So based off the amplified outdoor music, when I was at your event, would you consider the musicians that were there, was that amplified outdoor music at that point?
Yeah.
Okay, because literally, once you got on the backside of the barn, you didn't hear.
I know.
Anymore.
My, my construction did a pretty good job of keeping it going in the direction it needed to go.
Well, I look at that more as like, well, what is the scale of amplified? Like, because stadiums are much louder.
Yeah, I mean, their amplification was really nothing.
Right, and you had a good crowd in front of it. So that's what kind of trips me up, is like, we say amplified music, but there's no scale against what amplified means. So I don't, I don't know how we measure that, and if you do that on a complaint base, how do you?
It would be in decibels, that's all you, yeah, you'd have to have a decimeter to be able to.
Do you have a decimeter here?
I don't think we have one here, but I think we have one. If we left at ten o'clock and the neighbors complained, we could always re-discuss it, if I must consult, right?
I see, ultimately, you guys can always have me back out here and take this backwards a bit if it really becomes an issue. I mean, ultimately, too, is, my phone number's posted on the side of the road, call me if there's an issue. I can adjust as we go.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
I'm fine with it, I just, again, if we're gonna do amplified, I'd like to know what, what are the terms, what does that look like?
I think it's probably a term that a court wouldn't like.
I know. Like a D B.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to let you know, I think in the I U P that we have the authority to shut it down at any time. So if we do get a bunch of complaints, we'd work with the owner to.
Okay.
Control it.
Then let's, that's, that's good.
I think we, ultimately, we prefer Eric Clapton unplugged. Amplified version.
The stairway to heaven, please.
I think we had that one at the festival last year, towards the end of the night.
Yeah.
Okay. I think I had one more in here, page ninety-four, item one. Yeah, was that just referring, so was under the general, item one? Was that just referring to before issuance of building permits?
Are you talking about page ninety-four?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the engineering memorandum.
Yep.
Where exhibits, oh. You see, general, so we recommend all work associated with the previous improvement project be completed before issuance of a permit, and other items required for the construction of the proposed building. So my interpretation is complete the stormwater pond associated with the parking lot before issuing a building permit.
Oh, okay.
Is that stormwater pond big enough for the parking lot and the barn, or just the parking lot? Or is she not, okay, that's, well, okay.
My question on the stormwater pond is, Jason, she can dig her own pond?
I'm not digging my own pond, though.
Well, somebody's digging it, but I mean, you're not, you're not having a builder do it.
It was designed, I mean.
Okay, okay.
Regulations.
Yeah. The only reason I ask that is because the parking lot started before it was supposed to, that's the only reason.
Yeah, I went a little backwards in the beginning.
Right. We all do.
Learning and improving is vital.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Ask my parents, I ran before I walked.
The neighbors have a liquor thing, you talking about that or not?
So you're intending to obtain a liquor license, and I'm not too familiar with that. It's a separate process.
Okay, that's not part of this, okay, I didn't see it here, but it was mentioned at the, slightly at the planning commission, so I just want to make sure that.
They, they had, I've been told you guys have to approve the change with the egg to be able to allow liquor licensing.
Correct.
So I don't know if that's part of this specific spot, or if it's a different night, or.
Different night.
Different.
We'll have to have it as a separate conversation, yep.
Chop, chop, Zach.
Huh. Yep. Just sitting around doing nothing, you know?
All right, any motion second?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
I'm gonna add one correction, just so I don't forget. So item, condition number fourteen refers to special event permit, the correct language is a large assembly license.
Oh.
Sounds the same, but it's.
Yeah.
It's not.
Okay. So with that correction, all right, we got a motion second, any more discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Item L, master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, before you have the item for the acceptance of the master plan for the extension of Dayton Parkway. Applicant is itself for this one. So this is a city-initiated effort to create an area plan to guide the next comprehensive plan update. So this is just a guidance document that would then be utilized as part of the next comprehensive plan update that would be due in twenty twenty-eight, with no changes made to the comprehensive plan at this time. This will provide direction for how we expect the future development to occur in this area, particularly informing the alignment of Dayton Parkway and future street connections and street design of Dayton Parkway and the associated roadways that are connecting into it. Reevaluates the land uses in the study area and recommends the modifications to better reflect the city's vision for that area, and then providing guidelines for the type and style of development in the area, meaning both the site development and the building development within the area. A long history of where we started and where we are now. So this was approved in June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and we started off with a planning commission work session in September of twenty twenty-three. Starting at the end of October, after we had that work session, we posted a six-week-long online survey, and the results for that survey were in the packet. November of last year, we did the first landowner open house, which was well-attended and had roughly eighty to ninety residents attending. Then in March, a draft, March of twenty twenty-four, a draft master plan was presented to the planning commission. Following that, we received some feedback for further studying of the land uses within the area. So we came back and did a joint work session between planning commission and city council in May of this year. Following that, there was a presentation that was included in the packet as well by Jason on the, kind of the history of Dayton Parkway and the study and the analysis that's been done in the past. And that was presented to city council in June of this year. And then August of this year, another joint work session was held between planning commission and city council, and that was the final work session where you would have seen it the last time. Following that, we made changes to finalize the document, and then it was brought to an open house to present that draft master plan in October. And then in November, the planning commission held the public hearing on the master plan. So that's kind of the timeline of how we started and where we are now. So the master plan area, there's a variety of land uses in there, you know, ranging from the low-density residential all the way up through high-density residential and mixed-use, public and institutional and park, along with commercial and some business office. The G M U two is a zoning district that does exist for the mixed-use district, and that's designated as that town center area, which is the pink area in the center. For transportation, it focuses on the expansion of the existing network, specifically Dayton Parkway, which is the major, you know, connection between the south end of the master plan boundary and the north end, where it currently aligns up with one seventeenth, and then where it connects with Zanzibar. Those are essentially point A and point B that we had to connect between. And using that as the main corridor between there, there's a street hierarchy that establishes what are these, each of these roadways that connect into Dayton Parkway are, what access limitations they have, what roadway design standards they will follow, and then generally what traffic we can expect on those roadways as well. To clarify, too, there is a green line shown through the town center area. That is a, because I know this can be confusing, Dayton Parkway is actually designated as a connector street. The street that runs through the town center is designated as a Parkway street. So even though Dayton Parkway has the name Parkway after it, it's not actually designed as a Parkway street. The Parkway street would be designed within the town center area, and that distinction's important just because the Parkway has more landscape buffers, things like that, and it's expected that there'd be pedestrian and bicycle traffic on a Parkway, especially the town center where everything's built form is closer to that street to bring the building scale forward. And I'll get into a little more of those design standards and how that'll happen. As far as street design, there's three major street design components, or breakdowns for the street design, focusing mostly on the safety of both vehicles and pedestrians for this. So as I mentioned, the Parkway street, which is the Parkway that goes through the town center area, is designed at a hundred and fifty-foot right-of-way. It has more breakups between the trails and the sidewalks and the actual vehicle travel lanes, as well as having shoulders for parking and then a landscape meeting in the center of the roadway. All this is intended to provide opportunities for more green space, break up the vehicle and pedestrian traffic, and provide environments for all three of, you know, bicyclists, pedestrian and vehicles to travel safely. The connector street would be the next rank in it, in terms of width of the right-of-way. That would have a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way that prioritizes movement through the community. Parking on both sides are on, and portions will have on both sides, along with still having the bicycle and the pedestrian amenities provided. This would be Dayton Parkway, would be the connector street. And then everything that moves off of that would be considered a local street. So that's at the sixty-foot right-of-way, your typical design standards that would have sidewalks on the side, travel lanes, parking on the shoulders, things like that. Site and structures, so a new community park has been identified on the east side of French Lake. When you were looking at the land use map, it was the green parcel right next to their existing D N R boat landing area, to give you a reference for what's their day. That's intended to be kind of the focal point that the town center leads towards. And in keeping with that, keeping with the whole open space, green space, that was very high ranking on the surveys we received and the comments we received, was having lots of open space and green space. So we have additional screening standards for overhead doors and loading areas are included in this. That intent is then to screen those that don't have that natural character. Parking standards have also been added to have additional landscape islands and features breaking up those areas, encouraging that stormwater management have a double use, or two birds, two birds, one stone, to have designed as stormwater management and as a landscape feature. And then also encouraging the use of native plantings and diverse plantings. And there is a requirement in the document that landscaping has maintenance plans provided as part of it to ensure long-term survivability, specifically for native plantings, as they tend to need certain management of them to make sure they thrive and grow. Also, as part of the master plan, there's some resiliency options. So there was a big also response to having options for resiliency, you know, long-term sustainable development. So we came with a list of seven options, of which development gets to pick three that they would have to implement on a development proposal to hopefully cater to what best fits their development, not all of them are gonna be the same. So those options are permeable pavers, rain gardens or bio-retention systems, native species landscaping, green rooftops, aesthetic design, chloride management plans, and alternative energy. So they would just pick the three that benefit the project the most, or which are most viable for the project. It also then encourages, again, stormwater management to be designed as open space features, which can be one of those resiliency options with the rain gardens or bio-retention systems. As far as the town center, the town center is intended to be an area within Dayton that will serve as the heart of the community. You know, commercial, retail, offices, entertainment venues, high-density residential development that brings people into the area, those are all things we want to have as part of that town center district. As part of that, there was, you know, a lot of the survey questions that we sent out were catered towards like, what would you like to see as part of the town center, what styles of development, what types of open space, things like that. So there's a strong support for Public Square Town Center and Boulevard Town Center. And what those basically mean, you know, the two images I have on the slides, the top right is kind of your Public Square Town Center, a focal green space, open area with surrounding development. And then the Boulevard Town Center is kind of that linear style along the roadway, kind of gives you a corridor feeling where you have the roadway in the center with landscaping on either side, and buildings are brought up close to the pedestrian environment along the sidewalks. So we tried to blend those two options. So by having the focal green space area be the park at the end towards French Lake, that can be your focal landing Public Square Town Center area with development surrounding that. And then the Parkway street that runs through the town center, land use would be the area where you'd have more of the Boulevard Town Center, where you'd have some of the buildings clustered closer to the street, pedestrian, walkable environments, things like that. There was also a strong preference for commercial opportunities, specifically cafes and restaurants were number one. I think like ninety percent of people said they wanted cafes and restaurants. So all of these would be options that could go within any of the mixed-use area and any of the commercial area, being retail, entire, entertainment venues would be probably a little more, having to find the right spot for that, but then also having farmers markets and groceries along with restaurants and cafes. Yeah, so we were talking about the pink area in the land use map. As I said, the focal green space area is at the end there, so that'd be the landing point essentially of the Parkway, leading through all of the development that could occur in the town center area. The mixture of residential office, commercial and civic uses could all be blended within there. So there could be public spaces as well. And then having architecture standards including the town center to focus on diverse styles with clear entrances. So one of the different architecture standards that's in the town center is having ground floor windows. That's probably the most obvious change in the architecture standards, and that's to encourage when you're walking on that, you know, first floor ground level, that there's large windows, you know, lots of natural light, things like that, that would go through those areas. There's also additionally franchise architectures discouraged, so when you think of any of your franchises, McDonald's, Burger King, things like that, if they were to locate in this area, they would just have to blend their existing style of architecture that they use for their franchise with the character for the town center. So they wouldn't stick out and be kind of a one-off within the area. And then the building facade standards are slightly higher for the town center, so think percentage of materials, things like that. They're just slightly ticked up for this to give it a higher sense of design for that. So within the area, too, there was, you know, various architecture styles were desired. The survey was kind of all over the board in terms of a blend of having modern, traditional, you know, lots of glass, not a lot of glass, clean architectural lines, things like that. So we kind of provided an option to do any of those and mix them together. So the building facade standards aren't specific to a single architecture style. That way, it'll kind of blend in terms of having natural tone. That way, it'll kind of blend in terms of having natural tones, having different stone, brick, things like that that could all be blended in the area. So with that, I kind of went over high level of the master plan and dig too down into the details for each of the sections. I just wanted to provide an overview, looking for some feedback. And then as far as the Planning Commission recommendations, the Planning Commission did review this at their last meeting. They had some concerns with the plan as it was proposed, not citing specific changes, just that they didn't feel that was the area they wanted to study. So a lot of the conversation ensued about 117th, south of there, in the current Dayton Parkway alignment within there. So with that being the primary concern, that was not their only concern. In the staff packet, I did try to summarize some of the questions that came up from them. But that with that concern, they did recommend denial or not acceptance of the plan with a 4-0 vote. So that's how they, and the mayor was also at that meeting to hear the feedback. So if there is any questions for myself or John, please let us know. And this is not a public hearing, but you're certainly welcome to open it up for comment.
Any questions?
Just to reiterate, the commission's concern really is based on transportation. The planning area should have been larger and focused more on the transportation route versus the land use.
Land use. As per say, you're saying they want to have like a definitive, like this is where the road's going to go.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that line is on the map right now. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. I mean, whether it moves 100 feet east or west, it can be there for now. I personally, I just think this is, I agree that the south portion was much more important than this portion. And I think we're just kind of spinning our wheels on this deal because outside of about five people in this room, none of us are ever going to see this thing. That's as, that's as sugar-coated as I can make it.
So I guess what I'm wondering, I think that, you know, I've heard, listened to the Planning Commission meeting and of course, and the other public meetings that we've had, you know, ultimately, do I think this is the plan for that area? No, I don't. It, I think it accomplishes some good things. It kind of defines what flavor of development that we want in that area. I guess my, and a lot of the other comments, which are completely valid, is, you know, we probably should have looked at the area south of this first and figured out in more detail what we're doing with this road, what's the final configuration going to look like and, and the feasibility of that, given some of the challenges around acquiring property that are going to come in the future. But that's not, that's not this box. And so I think that the, you know, the journey continues. What I, what I don't know, we're not changing the comp plan to add this to it. I understand it's a planning document to be used for the 2050 plan is ultimately its, its use. If we accept this, how obligated are we to just cut and paste this into the 2050 plan? Or is it just a starting point for that discussion?
It's a starting point for that discussion. It's, it can be used if development comes in to have conversations with developers now, or if they're looking to pursue interest for their future to have conversations now. This plan, I mean, things can change. So I mean, between now and 2028, that's four years from now, this plan could change. There could be different colors on here. The, the consistencies are certain requirements that have to be met as part of your comprehensive plan that will still be in this area. This will still be a very dense area of Dayton in terms of development, just because there's an expectation for units per acre citywide, and most of the high-density stuff is within this boundary area. So that will still remain, but a lot of the other components could shift. So if, say, a commercial opportunity comes in, things could shift on where the commercial is shown on here if certain parcels get bought and want to be developed a certain way. So it, you're not tied to this plan as part of the 2050 plan. You could change it.
It does kind of become a guidance, though.
Yeah.
To put a little bit more context, when, when we first started figuring out that we needed to do a master plan, we were growing by 400 houses a year. And so the thought was if we continue at 400 houses a year, we're going to run out of, into the next staging plan, and we don't know where the road's going to go. So that precipitated the discussion of the, of the master plan area and brought us to where we're here now.
Well, and I did, I think that was a big part of their concern, too, was we still don't necessarily know that that's the road layout. And I mean, at least a few of them, and I've said this over time, too, I don't, how this lays out, I, I think doesn't make any sense. And I know we've gone over this before, but it's, it's to the point where I look at this and just shake my head because we have houses there that are not going to be going anywhere anytime soon. And the Maple Grove Parkway example, that's all ag land. So yeah, of course they really cut through there. But here, what we have are homes. I, I just don't know how we get over that home. And they're not trivial homes either. So I, I, I think that was, that was one of their bigger concerns, it seemed to me, was this layout, the road layout. And I, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but.
I don't disagree. I think some of the feedback I heard from people, so that line's going right through my entire property. I just shifted, so it's on the property lines, then it has to develop, it could develop south, it could develop north, depending which one goes first. So, because you're right, there's, these are homes and these are not, homes matter, it's not ag land. Some of this is ag land, but a lot of it's homes where the, the road is going through. A good chunk of it is homes. And I think part of it is because we're stuck with the current alignment of Dayton Parkway up to 117th, and we got it connected up. We know where it's going to start, where it's going to end, and making that connection's a tough part. And so I don't have a good answer. I'm not, I think that I like the zoning, I think, looks better than it did before for what it's worth, but I don't say it's perfect. But I just, I, yeah. I don't have any answers. I just look at and I go, huh.
So to ask it differently, what are, what are the implications of us not accepting this plan?
We have what we have today, which is the comprehensive plan.
Well, I mean, we can still keep this in our back pocket. It's just.
So if, if it's denied, we cannot use this as a policy document. Essentially, so if a developer were to come in, we wouldn't be able to give them this document and say, this is more closely what the council would like to see versus what we see today in the 2040 comp. Because it's not essentially a policy document if it's not accepted.
I don't know that.
We could still use the information to provide on the 2050 comp plan, but between now and the 2050 comp plan acceptance, we could, we would not be able to use this as a policy document if it was not accepted by the council.
How do we use a policy document that overrides the comp plan?
It does not override the comp plan.
So a question, other than the road layout, is there any other, are there any objections to the master plan besides the road layout?
Well, that's kind of the backbone of it.
It is, but I mean.
Like as far as facades, elements, like parts of that.
Those are going to change in five, 10 years.
It's going to change five times.
Not worried about that, so.
That's immaterial.
But as far as like the use with the commercial, with the residential, like those element pieces there, you're saying like, are you asking if that's like the envision this council has for that area?
Yeah, well, to try to.
Does it necessarily to the acue or?
Speed up the conversation. If, if the major objections is the road layout, do you want us to work on that more, or do you want to just scrap the plan?
I would like to see more on the transportation side, because I think that's kind of just where I feel like we all feel it falls short. I mean, and, and.
And by transportation, I think we'd like some guidance to staff because.
Right.
Do you want us to physically go out there and take soul borings and look for roadways? Do you want to just have us avoid every house out there? That's kind of the questions we'd ask as staff is, all our fine answers is just we need to have more direction if that's the case.
I'd be very curious, though, if you were to move this road, shift the angles of the curves, whatever, how many, how few properties could you touch?
I mean, we could touch less properties. Initially, the direction was to use the alignment that made the most sense in terms of land uses and not, it didn't, there was no, the preference was not to impact the least amount, but show the best alignment. We can certainly impact less. I mean, you can, you can curve roadways to get around corners and things like that. It's just that when you're starting with a fresh slate and like this will not, what's out there right now will not be there when all of this develops, whether that takes 20 years or 50 years. So we're looking at a plan that we're trying to plan for the future and not what's there today. So homes that are there today may not be there in the future, and so we're looking at that from that perspective. If the object was to preserve homes, we can obviously do things to mitigate and impact the least amount of properties and to go through areas that are mostly open space. I wouldn't say that we can avoid all of the homes in the area. There's too many. So no matter where we go.
There's at least one you got to hit because it's at the end of the road. So I understand. You can't avoid all of them. No one's disagreeing with that statement. But I mean, it would be.
I think, yeah, I think you could down maybe, maybe five or six total, if you were to curve it around. Again, I think I agree with Kevin's point is that we're trying to do with a blank slate. I know that it's difficult to envision that because there are homes out there, but we don't want to.
I think the next step is taking it beyond a blank slate because it isn't a blank slate.
Well, the idea is that in 50 years from now, if we curve the road away from somebody's property that's currently there, and then they're no longer there because the roadway's next to their house because they don't want to be next to a roadway, and now we've curved the road around something that maybe we shouldn't have, now we're having the.
So the best plan for 50 years is not to have those two endpoints. I don't know where we go with this because I, I haven't liked it from the get-go, but I, and I've listed my reasons. I, I don't know.
Let me ask this question. If you, if this alignment is, if the land uses is the way it is right there, and the reason I ask this is because this happened, is that how you're going to tax?
Well, assuming there's an assessment at some point.
City staff would not look to currently assess based on.
This, okay.
I don't know that they're being assessing the one on at this point.
I would agree. We're talking about two different things.
We, we're talking about past history.
Recent, past.
Current staff. It was an assessment, assessment based on trip generation, which was dependent on land use. Typically, an assessment would be done, not in that fashion. That was unique to the interchange. It's only been done twice in state.
Or were we the third?
You're the second.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't.
The, the question is, is this better or worse than what we had before?
I feel it's kind of the same.
To me, the only, the only main thing that matters, and it's going to change anyway, is the road alignment. That's all that matters.
I feel like we took the X and we just went.
What really matters is the land uses, honestly. The road alignment doesn't much matter because as long, that's what the council wants to do, is connect two endpoints. It's going to be, what does the developer really want to do to connect it from one end of their property to the next?
They make it work, right?
And, and more or less, what we're concerned about is the land use. So you can do it one of two ways. You can make the road and then put the land uses around it, or you can make the land uses and then put the road around it. But we're really more concerned about the land uses in general of what does the council want to see in this area, not so much where the roadway, because the roadway could adjust a quarter mile.
Right.
Either which way.
I don't, I mean, the land use dictates where the roads are because, I mean, otherwise we wouldn't be caring about the commercial down below 117.
That's what I'm saying. So if you set the land uses first of what you like to see, then you could adjust the one, adjust the roadway.
Well, I won't know what the land use should be until I know where the road is.
Sure.
Like I said, the argument could go either way. That's why.
I'll say the one thing I do like, and we heard this at a couple of the meetings, is there is a gradual shift from where Brayburn Trails is now, from light density to heavy density. If I'm trying to find a positive in this, I would say that I do like a lot.
Yeah.
To give credit for, for the work that's been done, and I heard that from multiple people, I like that. Also, I think the steeper those curves are, the more so many people slow down, and the more people slow down in the city center, the less of a fly through city center it's going to be, and the more people are going to utilize it, and it's going to drive business there. So I think that's a benefit, too.
So just to provide, so when we, when we started this project and we discussed the scope of the project and everything, the focus at that time was discussing land uses. That's, you know, the reason that drove this effort was to discuss the land uses within this area. I know there was discussion at that time of moving south of 117th. We decided on this area, north of 117th is the area to study. So working under the assumption that we kind of had two landing points. We had Zanzibar and we had where Dayton Parkway currently is. And the assumption the whole time was those are not going to shift. Those are constructed roadways. We weren't going to make major changes to those landing points. So the, the goal was to tie those two together with Dayton Parkway and then reevaluate the land uses based on that, knowing that if Dayton Parkway does end up shifting, because when we actually get to constructing it, it shifts a couple hundred feet to the west or east on one of these corners, the land uses would then follow that. So the, you know, to give the easiest example, where it shows commercial on the south and east side of it and the mixed use on the west and north side of it, if the road alignment shifts a little bit, those land uses will follow so that the commercial stays on one side of the intersection and the mixed use stays on the other side. So that's where the land uses and the transportation are tied together and kind of play upon each other, but they're not set in stone in the terms of the, if the alignment shifts a little bit, the land uses will follow as well.
He lights up people up. Come on up. Name and address.
Scott Schudie, 11980 East French Lake Road. 32-year resident. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members for letting me speak. I've lived out there 32 years, built the home myself, have no intention of selling for a road. I've made this very clear to everybody. Kevin knows me. Been to the meetings, been to the open houses, talked to the Planning Commission, and now it's your turn. There's just a lot of things wrong with this in my mind. If you got to get from point A to point B, it seems that there are routes that you could take that are more of a direct route, that you can miss a lot of residential homes for now. I keep hearing that this is going to be 20, 30, 40, 50 years. I don't trust that. If, if the right money comes in, this could be in five years. There's, I, this road has wandered around Dayton ever since I've been here. It's at various times clipped the back of my property, clipped the front of my property, been just south of my property, and now it goes through my dining room. And it's, the big S curve, thinking that that's going to slow traffic or anything, it's not. It seems that if you're going to do this, just go from point A to point B, try and miss all the residential you can for now. If the road comes in significantly ahead of the rest of the development, the people that have invested decades of their lives in their properties and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars have the opportunity to stay there a little bit longer, even if there's road noise. Also, just in this presentation, it, it just, something doesn't seem right about putting a town center up against a lake. Your developers that come in there and are going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars developing this town center are going to want access to it from four directions. You're already limiting it to three, and it, it makes, it would make more sense of it further north where traffic from Rogers could get to it, traffic from Champlin could get to it, traffic from south Dayton to Maple Grove can get to it, traffic from the top can get to it, instead of being rammed up against a lake where you're already cutting off 25% of the access. So the, the Planning Commission rejected it 4-0, and I would just urge you to do that and maybe go back and just come up with a simpler, more straightforward plan. It, it seems like to me that ultimately developers are going to come and make proposals to you rather than the city. And I know you want to, you know, guide this or direct it, but it seems like they're going to come and ask you for approval of their plan down the road. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Where are we at?
Hey.
Okay. Name and address?
April Johnson Richter, 17100117. A road is not gonna be a little line. That road's gonna be massive, and though it doesn't go right through my, my parents' lot, mine is the third one smack dab in the middle of that pink. That's gonna be commercial. It's gonna be what a, a strip mall. This is our family home. We've been there for 40 some years, and it just hurts my heart that we're gonna change, we're gonna put a, a huge road through a family lot. There's a lot of families that are out there, too, and I know, I can, I appreciate you guys saying this, but there's gotta be something different. There's a ton of farmland out there, and I don't want anyone to lose their property, but to say, oh yeah, we'll just give you, we'll give you money for your house. This is more than a house. I grew up there. I would hike down to French Lake. We have a pond in our backyard. I've got little kids that love going out there. They love seeing the horses. They love going to Dayton. And to put this through, this is taking away what Dayton is. I think you guys are on the right track with it, but we gotta do something different, because this is, that's not Dayton by any means. I don't know, I can see your wheels turning, but saying, we're gonna deal with it in 50 years or whatever, well, this is my family's legacy. This is my kids that are gonna live there. And, you know, I'm facing it now where my parents are getting older. I want, if I have to sell it, what are we gonna do? Are we even gonna get what's worth out of it? But I wanna keep this. I wanna keep this in the family. So by putting a, a little line, a parkway's not a line. It's gonna be huge, and it's, even now with all of the development that's going in, the traffic on that road is ridiculous. I used to ride horses up and down that road. I'm scared to even walk down that road with an animal, a dog, because these people just zip through there, the commercial traffic that's in there. And we haven't even added in these streets yet. So what more of an issue are we gonna be creating? So thank you for at least listening, and I know your hearts are in the right place, but let's keep Dayton where, as much as we can.
Thank you.
For any way that we could see, like, where keeping the existing roadway alignments are with making small changes to kinda make this connection, kinda just give us a visual to that? Like, have you, maybe we've done it in the past, and I neglect seeing it, but like, I've always been fixated on like this S curve, but is there something that we've done where we've tried to reutilize, like, the existing roadways and make the connection that way? Making slight adjustments off of like 113th and East French Lake, and off of 117th, some smaller?
That involves moving the parkway.
Remember how much that was cut? Remember how much that cost?
We, we talked about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, unfortunately, we're stuck with that, kinda, unless, unless the developer comes up with 349 bucks.
So, I wanna make sure this is clear with everybody, is that the city isn't doing anything with this plan. We aren't buying anybody's properties or houses. We have to plan for if a developer comes to them and buys the property, now we have to know what to tell the developer, what to put on it.
That, that is all true, except you could get a council come in here and condemn.
Could, yep.
You could.
Yeah, 100%.
Well, number one, I mean, I think we, well, at least I know, and I believe, I believe someday that road's going to happen.
It will. Or something like it.
The state of Minnesota spent a lot of money putting that, the interchange there, and their intention is just to have a roadway there.
Yep.
100%. So someday, it's going to happen.
It is.
And that's only gonna be, that's why the plan is in front of you today, is to plan for it, not to do anything currently with that plan, besides have a plan for that, if it happens.
The packet does include, uh, the presentation that was provided back in June of different routes. We don't have that as slides in the PowerPoint, but that, that is included in the packet. Well, so, the request before the, the council is, is a request to approve the master plan. I guess the question that staff has is, if you wanna, do you wanna change anything in the plan, or do you want to, it sounds like there's concerns on transportation alignment. Is this something that you want us to look at, or do you just want us to stop working on this?
I, I think that if this doesn't get approved, um, I think we, we would probably owe staff a direction as to what we're doing here. And I'm, I, um, and, and, you know, maybe, I think we've had a work session on this in the past, but to be honest, I don't think there was a lot of, um, acceptance of the fact that there were a number of commissioners and councilmen that just had a major hangup with where that road's at. And, you know, maybe we are stuck with it, but, and it, it wouldn't be cheap to move it, but I think it's, I personally think it's a bigger disaster to just say this is gonna be our 50-year thing, so.
Seems to me like this is, this has been the issue from the beginning, is where does that road go? And I think that a lot of the work around it makes, makes sense if that's where the road goes, but that's probably not where the road should go. And so that ends up being my dilemma with it, is, I don't know, do, you know, do we have to back up and, and look at what is, what is the best possible solution for this road? And then move the, the boxes around again? Or do we just call this, call this done and talk about the road as a separate project? I don't, I'm sure I know what the right answer is. And this, this study has gone on for quite a long time already, and it maybe has produced as much as it can. But the road's gotta get fixed. I think there's probably unanimous opinion that it, that we need to do better with the road than what we've got today.
And are you talking about the road north of 117th?
Well, yes, I, I guess I'm trying to limit my comments to the study area. I think we've got problems above and below it. Um, but this, you know, this is, this is part of it. If the, you know, we, because we had a starting point and an endpoint, you know, this is, this is what you could draw inside that box. Um, and I know that there's more thought gone into it than that, but you had to get from here to there with it. You know, is that, is that the, the final answer? Is, you know, the, the roadwork we've already done, did we, did we make a mistake there and we have to undo it before we multiply it? Or on the north side, is it, Zanzibar exists, but does that mean we have to tie into it at the spot that it intersects today? And there is more open land to the north, you know, the west of.
To the west.
Yeah, that, you know, so could the Dayton Parkway come through a different way and tie into Zanzibar in a different spot? You know, outside the scope of this study, I get that, but it just feels wrong to approve this with a road that nobody thinks is in the right place.
I have a question for the council. What is the right place for the road, then?
We don't know.
I think that's, I think that's the biggest, and I think that's the question.
The right place is just like this, in my opinion. You get it somewhere along that line. I mean, there is a holt right there that you're gonna take them up, but, um, to me, this is the problem, Randy. This is, this should've never happened. Originally, it went this way, and for some reason, it got changed.
I know the council's stuck on, it shouldn't have gone that way, and I, I get it, I understand his staff, that that's where it is today. We can fix it. It costs money to fix it.
I understand that.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I just wanna understand that. I think every, every one of the councilors probably has a different direction of where they think the road should go, and likely every resident in that area probably has a different direction of which way the road was going. And so that's what makes it difficult, is we have to make some sort of decision of, okay, reach and accept it, and be okay with the land uses, and then work on transportation, scrap the whole thing, which has been roughly about a $30,000 expense so far that.
That's all.
Well, that's some cost.
I thought it was closer to 70.
Uh, nope. It's about 30.
That money spent.
Uh, correct, that's what I mean. So, I'd like to at least accept something for the 30 grand versus, uh, denying something we just spent 30 some thousand bucks on.
Well, except.
Any more questions?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny it.
I'm gonna second it.
Okay, we have a motion to not accept.
So he ayes the denial, correct? Just so we're on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay. The ayes not accept.
Okay.
Um, okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, say that again.
If you, so, it was motion by Solonik, seconded by Fashid, to not accept the master plan as it sits today.
Yes.
To not accept.
So to not accept it, we vote yes?
Yes. To not accept it, you vote no. If you do, if you do not agree with that motion, then you vote no.
Or abstrusely, just say, you don't accept it. But, we've had this come up a couple times.
Yeah.
So, any more discussion?
So if, if it's, assuming it's not accepted, we'll pick up the conversation again when we work on the 2050 comp plan?
Or, yeah, well, I, my guess is we'll pick it up earlier than that, because we're gonna have to figure out something here, at least with the, with the connection point. So.
I think there needs to be some direction there.
Sooner than later.
Yep. Yep. Okay. All those in favor with the motion to deny, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. On item M.
Just pull up a couple things here briefly. All right. Meeting of Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, you are being asked to consider a request for a variance to the Dayton sign ordinance at 17950 Maple Court. Uh, if you recall, in, earlier this year in May, uh, the city council approved a conditional use permit for a motor fuel station. Uh, QuickTrip there, there was a sign packet that was included in that development plan, um, and the guidance was to approve the overall development, aside from the signage, and any requests for signage that would be beyond what the code would allow would come back. And, um, that's why we're here today. Uh, so the applicant is QuickTrip. Uh, the variance is related to an interstate-oriented sign, um, and is proposed to be 80 feet tall, 225 square feet, not located at a primary entrance of the site, um, and then as well as being located within a drainage utility easement. Uh, with the plating of the QuickTrip plat, it'd be QuickTrip 1187, uh, that entire southeast corner that is shown here is located in a drainage and utility easement due to some stormwater pounding directly north of that area. Just a brief overview about the sign, or the variance requirements, um, it's a, variance requests are to be considered by a three-part test, meeting all parts of the test. Um, variances may be granted when the applicant, uh, for the variance established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance, uh, meaning the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning ordinance. The plight of the landowner must be due to non-economic circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner, and the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. And just to note, economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties for a variance. Within the applicant's narrative, uh, there are certain surrounding issues to the site that would hinder visibility to an interstate-oriented sign that is code-compliant at that 25-feet-tall, 64-square-feet sign area. Um, and those include significant grade changes from location of the signs surrounding MinDOT right-of-way, including the Dayton overpass, uh, for eastbound traffic. Uh, there's a grove of trees on city-owned property directly northwest of the Dayton interchange that also hinders visibility, and there's a billboard here, uh, that you can see on this bottom corner, that, uh, on the RDO property that also makes it, uh, an issue for, um, I-94 traffic to be able to see the sign, know that there's a QuickTrip there, and safely make the maneuvers to, um, safely exit the interstate and use the Uh, again, just the applicant's request, uh, they did a sign survey that was included in the packet in their narrative, um, that addressed what types, what size sign, and what size sign area would be needed to meet the visibility standards for this area, uh, and that a code-compliant sign, uh, would not meet that, uh, based on their survey. And I think that, uh, originally in May, they had mentioned that they were looking at a 50- or 60-foot-tall sign. Through that survey that they conducted, uh, 50- to 60-foot-tall sign would still not meet those visibility requirements that, uh, the applicants would be looking for, for interstate traffic. In staff's review of the request, while the staff acknowledges this site and surrounding area pose visibility issues for a code-compliant sign, uh, reviewing this rationale against the variance criteria did not necessarily warrant a variance. Um, there does not appear to be a practical difficulty on the site that wouldn't otherwise allow a code-compliant sign to be built. Um, in this case, it's more so of an issue of what type of visibility does a code-compliant sign get you in this area for interstate traffic? Another, uh, item that staff noted was altering the character of locality. Uh, a sign like this in a mostly undeveloped interstate corridor could, would likely set a precedence for future development expectations of signage in this area. Um, as you'll see later tonight, there is, uh, preliminary plat proposal for the south corner of the Dayton Parkway, um, that could, uh, would set, this application would likely set a precedence for that, uh, future development. So a couple of considerations for the city council tonight is, does the applicant's rationale for the request warrant a variance in this case, uh, based on the information provided? And two, does the city council feel that the character of this corridor will be altered if the interstate-oriented sign is approved, setting a precedence for early developments in the future? Staff's initial recommendation was for denial. The planning commission reviewed and considered this and held a public hearing at their last meeting, uh, in, on November 7th, I believe, uh, and the commission recommended approval, finding that, uh, the applicant provided sufficient evidence for a variance to the sign ordinance. As such, staff had prepared a resolution for each action for your consideration tonight. Uh, one thing I'll just note as well is there was some additional con, uh, conversation at the planning commission level about the code-compliant pylon sign previously proposed at, uh, the corner of Holly Lane North and Dayton Parkway, and, uh, whether the applicants would be willing, if this variance was granted, uh, to alter their code-compliant sign, the pylon at 25 feet tall at that corner, uh, to adjust it to be more of a monument-style sign at either 12 or 16 feet. And as you can see here, the applicants have since provided that for, um, just additional context that stemmed from that conversation at the planning commission level. Um, with that, the applicant is here tonight. I know that, uh, they had prepared an app, a presentation, if the council would, uh, like to see that, or certainly if you had just general questions, uh, staff is here as well as the applicant to assist with that.
Just to be clear, the monument sign is, is, requires us to approve the other sign?
Uh, it was more, yeah, I would say that that was kinda the planning commission's thought, was that if they, if the, the variance was granted for a pylon sign at 80 feet tall near I-94, um, would the applicant consider changing that to a monument? I asked the planning commission at that night if they would wanna add that as a condition of approval to the variance, and they did not feel that that was necessary to do so. So in short, I would say no.
Let me give us your name and address.
Certainly. Matthew Leckey, 1626 Oak Street, La Crosse, Wisconsin, at QuickTrip Headquarters. Uh, thank you to Hayden and John for their good advice in walking us through the process. I was a city planner for over a decade, so I have been in their shoes for a lot of these meetings. Uh, do you have the PowerPoint?
Is it the same deck you showed at the planning commission?
If I may, yes.
Yeah, did everyone see it already, or no?
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. Yeah, thanks for asking.
Yeah.
So I will. So I will walk you through this quickly, and then we'll look at a few of the photos as Hayden showed us from the sign survey. So, the sign survey company does these all over the country. Guy's actually based in South Dakota. Does a lot for Loves and other companies, so he does all shapes and sizes of these all over the country. Eighty feet was what we landed on for that particular spot where it's proposed, due to the obstacles. Hayden mentioned the trees to the north, the billboard to the south there, and then the height of the overpass. Actually, one of the pictures we'll look at, you'll see that eighty feet may sound like a lot, but if you're coming eastbound, it peaks over the overpass, and that's about it. So, we'll look at that in a moment. The fifty-foot tall sign that he mentioned a moment ago for another spot on the site, kind of the northwest corner. When we did the sign survey, unfortunately, those trees, you literally, until the off-ramp was already going by you as you were headed eastbound, that was when you finally saw that fifty-foot tall sign for the first time. So that was why that really wasn't a safe option. If half the traffic going by wasn't going to see it all until it was too late, so. Again, eastbound traffic, we have multiple obstacles. You've got the trees, you've got the overpasses, the one as you round the corner, and then you head kind of southeast there. And then obviously Dayton Parkway itself, just the height of that overpass. Westbound traffic, aside from that billboard, I think we'd be in a lot better shape. The billboard's really the only thing, once you make the curve and head northwest there, you should have a pretty clear view. So I'm not as concerned about westbound as I am about eastbound.
Is that billboard, is that the property that we had an issue with during the acquiring of all the property?
Different one, okay.
Different one, yeah.
Good question, I'm there.
Go ahead.
Same thing.
So, we'll look at the photos in a moment, but one of the things we weren't able to do was take the blimp. One of the heights we actually looked like, looked at originally was a hundred and twenty-five feet, which is, once we put it up, you could see it over the trees if you were headed eastbound.
From Minneapolis?
Well, yeah, but that's, the problem is, one of the criteria, variance criteria, not state, but local, is you're not going to change the essential character of the locality. We couldn't say at a hundred and twenty-five feet that that would have changed things. That was too tall. So we didn't consider that, but that's why we moved it to this other spot here for consideration, and then eighty being lower. So, this was the last spot the surveyor did, and unfortunately I didn't get to, didn't get him to shoot video of it. So otherwise I would show you video, which I usually like to do in these sorts of presentations. So, local variance criteria here, needs to be in harmony with the purpose of the code, comp plan. Also, can only be when the applicant establishes you have practical difficulties, so then it goes through those items. Again, planning commission, the use has already been approved. It's only this interstate oriented sign at issue tonight. You're dealing with B4 BP zoning, so certainly this kind of use, this is the right spot for it, given you've got heavy equipment, you've got Semstone, things like that nearby. The, he mentioned non-economic circumstances surrounding this. Again, site's in a bowl down, you've got Dayton Parkway, and then the site goes down. And that's why the detention pond is at the south corner, that kind of triangle area there by RDO, because of the grade. Again, this is the kind of thing where you've got the grove of trees, you have the detention pond, you have those things around the site that really are not anything that QuickTrip has created here. So that's how QuickTrip believes it does satisfy that prong of the test. Again, essential locality, character of the locality not being changed. You've got heavy equipment, you've got Semstone, you've got warehousing and distribution nearby. This is about as good a place if you could find one for this kind of thing, so you don't disrupt other things such as residential. And then practical difficulties, again, every place defines these differently. It's always interesting, different places I go, to see how they define them. A lot of times, they're not defined at all. It's sort of in the eye of the beholder. So again, this is a matter of the trees, the billboard, the overpass, that sort of thing. And then also just giving people enough time to safely get off the interstate. We've got four lanes going in each direction, so people are going to need a little extra time. With that many lanes and the volume of traffic we often have out there, people need to see ahead of time to make a safe maneuver. We don't want people making sudden maneuvers. I'm going to go up north in January to have a similar discussion. And again, I'm saying the same thing. People are going sixty, seventy miles an hour, and I hate to admit it, but several people drive distracted anymore. I don't want people to see the sign at the last second and not think about their surroundings, and then try to change two lanes. That's not, that wouldn't be right on our part. So we try to avoid that. That's why we, again, ask for eighty, so it can be seen in both directions with enough time for people to make the right move and do it safely. So, very quickly, and I'll show you some of the site survey photos here in a moment. QuickTrip does believe this is appropriate for an interstate oriented use. And again, the sign request does satisfy each of those variance findings I just went through from city code. And I believe it satisfies state code as well for being granted a variance. So we'll jump over, if we may, to the survey photos. And again, thank you for running the show here. Okay, so, westbound, coming toward the site. Once you round the corner, you can see there kind of above, there's that silver Dodge minivan there. And the arrow means it's behind the sign on the interstate. But if we go down to six tenths of a mile there, you can see it in the background, just peeking over everything between those two vehicles in front of us. We keep going closer then, you can see it there on the right-hand side. At this point, the billboard is obscuring the bottom half of the sign. And you have the same story there, except for a tiny fraction of the sign. You can't see it at four tenths because of that billboard that's there. Three tenths of a mile, thankfully, now we're clear. Although, and again, this is one of those interesting things, just by dint of where you are on the road and how things appear closer versus farther away, sign doesn't look very big next to that billboard at this point, but at least you can see the sign. Two tenths comes into clear focus. One tenth, and then at the exit, you can see it clearly.
And that's with the eighty-foot sign?
Yeah, this is the, so, yep.
So do you, you go back to the half a mile one?
Sure.
So the half a mile one, if you're going, I'm gonna do quick math, sixty miles an hour, that means you're going a mile a minute. So you've got thirty seconds at this point in time from seeing this to get over from the far right lane to go over for the turn lane. If you're driving a semi, thirty seconds is gonna be enough time? I would argue, my, what I'm trying to argue is, I don't think it's gonna make a difference, because I don't think that, that, that thirty seconds, I've never driven a semi. But I've driven a motorhome before.
Sure, as have I.
And, and, I don't think getting across four lanes on that road, or three lanes on that road, I don't think thirty seconds is gonna be enough to do it.
Really depends on the amount of traffic, I think you're right.
But driving that road on a normal day, I don't think thirty seconds is, you're right, middle of the night, maybe. But like, on normal traffic, I don't think thirty seconds is gonna be enough to, to, for someone to see that and say, I better get over and get over quick, and I can do it safely.
Sure, and this is where the tension between code and what's safe comes into play. Because, yes, if we built a two-hundred-foot tall sign, as we joke, you can see it from Minneapolis, you'd know with plenty of time. But that's not appropriate here. I mean, we have.
I'm not trying to say it should be tall, just so we're on the same page.
Yeah, no, and I, I agree with you. But basically what, what QuickTrip's trying to do here is thread the needle between what's appropriate along the interstate here. Not, I mean, we have much taller signs in other places.
I'm only worried about here.
But they aren't appropriate for here. So that's why we went with eighty, just enough. And then if we go down to eastbound photos, if I may, thank you again. You'll see what I'm talking about for as we approach from this direction. So, again, yellow arrow, you can't see it at all. Still can't see it at all. Now, at five tenths, you might see a tiny sliver of it, but that's why he put the arrow on there, which is, unless you're intently looking for it, you're not gonna see it. So once you get underneath the overpass there, still can't see it at this point. So again, we're not, this is not a beacon for miles and miles away. Three tenths of a mile, you can see it clearly. Two tenths, to get a little closer. Now, the other thing I want to point out with this one in the one-tenth photo would be, you see where the traffic signals are. So, again, this is not looming over everything. This is barely tall than the traffic signals as we get into the one-tenth of a mile photo here. You can see the traffic lights are basically in line with the lower part of the sign. So this is not something that's immensely tall. In fact, if you parked a semi there and you've got your diverging diamonds, so you've got the lanes as they cross over there and the one side stopped. I wish when we had the sign survey performed, there'd been a semi parked there, just to give us a little more scale for, uh, I'm not saying semi would block it, but just to see, okay, this is a thirteen-and-a-half-foot tall vehicle parked there, and this is how much of it you'd see above it. Now, obviously, the traffic signals are taller than the semi, but again, it's really the bare minimum we could do and still have people see it. We'll go down just to the last photo there at the exit. You can see the effect at the exit here, the fact that the sign's down the slope. Because again, now you see the tops of those traffic lights. And the tops of the traffic lights in this picture are even with the top of the sign from that perspective, so.
Was there a problem putting the sign on the southwest part of the property instead of the southeast? Because that would help with this angle, but I, I don't know if there was.
Um, I can go back up.
I mean, right now.
Yeah, let's go. Because I think.
It is in the southwest.
Northwest, I think.
Oh, northwest was the one where.
You're talking right here.
It is in the southwest.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay, sure. So that was the one where we did the fifty and everything. The problem was then the trees. As you went farther out to the northwest there, the trees got in the way. Because that was the one where we measured it, and a hundred and twenty-five was what you would have needed to get.
That's because it's, it's more north, and it's gonna have.
Yeah, exactly.
The trees are gonna block it.
That was the problem, yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would make more sense, as you say, to put it up on a little bit more elevation.
They were not getting low.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. But that was the issue, is the trees, so.
So I, I get, you know, the need for this height, for visibility from the roadway. When you mention that, you know, your neighbors are RDO and Semstone, that's only looking one direction. I wish there had been, and I did ask for this, but I don't think it was done. What does it look like from the west? Well, this is all kind of sideways here, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say Dayton Parkway runs east and west, just for my own purposes here. And, and so I'm talking about residents on the west. Is this, how far west is that sign visible for them to that existing neighborhood, Laurel Creek? And also, well, I, and there's gonna be more people there. We're gonna be talking soon here about a large apartment development more or less straight across the road from, from where you're at. So they're gonna see the sign, no matter what kind of sign you have, I get that. But how far does that light, is that light traveling past, past that area?
If I may, council member, I did go out and, after we had spoke at the EDA meeting, and went to Territorial Trail, Territorial Grove, and then Development and Rogers that is on the corner of Brockton and Dayton Parkway. And I used the Semstone location as a reference, that seventy-seven-foot tall building there. There was only one location that you could see it, and it was from the closest point of Territorial Commons. Excuse me, I think I said Grove. Territorial Commons, the townhomes down there on Territorial Road. And the only reason that you could see the Semstone building was because the leaves had fallen on the trees that would have otherwise been blocking that. And just to, just to add more context, the grade or the elevation of that seventy-seven-foot tall Semstone building is thirty feet taller than where this is being proposed. So I did do a little bit of recon. It might not have been as much information as I could have provided in that amount of time. But at least there was a little bit of context in terms of surrounding residential neighborhoods.
Okay, well, that's, that's better news, because I'm a little bit sensitive to this. Just because of my location, and, and it's not here. I live along the river, okay? The other side of the river, about a mile away, is Highway 10. And towering above the trees.
There's all the signs.
Year-round, is a Pleasureland RV dynamic sign that, you know, you wanna know what's on sale tonight, I can tell you. This is a mile away, right? And it's the only thing that sticks above there. Ramsey's got ordinances similar to ours. So I'm, I'm sure that sign is, is there because of a variance in how that ever got through, I don't know, but.
It might have been there long.
But it, it, it just looks ridiculous to me that you've got this huge thing towering over basically a tree line. And I'm not buying an RV tomorrow, so I don't need to know what's on sale. So, you know, this is the same kind of thing. All the people that live in the area are gonna know where your gas station is. They don't need a, they don't need a sign to find that. It's the interstate traffic. And so I understand what you're doing here. I just am concerned about the, the surrounding people that actually live there. What are they, what are they ultimately looking at?
Well, and I think one thing that helps is, this is the kind of sign where it's not gonna be flashing, constant. The only time anything would change is gas price changes. And that's gonna be instantaneous, doesn't flicker, doesn't do anything like that. So there's not a message center on this call sign, as you say, to change and, as you say, sort of cause distraction, if you will.
Yeah. So you're saying that particularly you get over toward where Dayton Parkway runs into Brockton, that this is essentially not visible, you're thinking at that height?
Correct. And that's just going out and kind of going to the corner and seeing what I can see and.
Yeah. I think, and I guess we didn't ask for it soon enough, but it, it seems to me like that's a normal part of a sign study is, I mean, I understand you're doing it for a business purpose, you know? How are we gonna get that traffic off the road and into the, into the store? But, you know, what it looks like around you, I think, is important, and I think should have been, there should be pictures showing from at Brockton and Dayton Parkway. What does that, what does that look like? So, I'm trusting you that this is not an issue at that height, but I would have liked to have seen it.
Sure, understood.
I'm curious, looking at your presentation and everything you've brought forward, it sounds like you put a sign up that people might see. And that's, that's a huge might. What about, I've seen this before, I travel a lot. You've got a billboard a mile before Dayton Parkway, west on ninety-four. And then just before, just coming like down ninety-four, I guess on the side you got one a quarter mile away. Permanent billboard sign.
Availability. Are they available? This is, well.
You do it today, I guarantee you have a spot.
Now, the, the digital ones, of course, it's hard because the message changes pretty quickly. So you're hoping the right person sees it in that right window.
I can't tell you how many times I, yeah.
You look at just about the time it switches off.
And then you're trying to figure out what it said, and it's boom.
Yeah, and then of course you're not paying attention the whole time, which is a whole other deal. Yeah, so our marketing department is the one that looks for billboards. Sometimes, depending on what town you're talking about, sometimes they're in long-term leases. It's really frustrating, because we would like that. And you certainly see, when you travel, we will, hey, travel center, exit such and such. But it all just depends on what's available and when, and, yeah, it, it, it's hard because they're sort of separate things. You're definitely not the first person to ask me these questions.
Oh, I know.
No, no.
I just looked at the sign, I was like, I'll solve all your problems right now.
Yeah, we both drive places, we both see billboards for things, right? So, yeah, that's what's hard, is it's hard to connect the two. Because if it's not available, then holy cow. The other question I get a lot is, well, what about the blue sign just before the exit? The traveler information sign. And again, it assumes nobody's blocking your view. It assumes you happen to be paying attention and looking at it.
All things that apply to your sign too, so.
Yeah, well, no.
I'm saying fairness, you have how short time you have to react to this, it's the same issue.
And that's what's, but that's, that's what's really hard here is, what is the best sign that we think would work here? Because again, you have curves in both directions. You've got an overpass going north there, right, or northwest. Like I say, you've got various obstacles, but at the same time, you're gonna flat-out deny me if I show up and say, oh, I need a hundred and fifty-foot sign. Well, could we build one? Yes, we could actually afford it. But I'll tell you, those things are awfully expensive. That's one of the questions that was brought up earlier, one of the points that was brought up earlier was, does this set a precedent? And I think part of the question is, not everybody could afford a sign this tall. And I'm not saying that in a bragging way, but we're probably talking, depending on what, one of these kinds of sites I'm looking at, two-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollar sign here. So the barrier to entry for one of those is kind of high. So I don't know.
And they'd still need variance.
And they, exactly. And each variance gets considered on its own merits and all that. So, I think there are some obstacles to everybody jumping on board with that kind of thing. But it is a good question. Unfortunately, I can't tell you, okay, if these three. Unfortunately, I can't tell you, okay, if these three billboards at whatever stretch of the interstate, you know, what's, what's the least status, that kind of thing? If I knew all that, boy, we'd, we'd be in good shape. So I apologize, I can't give you more about that.
I just know that it wasn't talked about, so I was just gonna throw it in, because it's there still, it's already there, so...
Absolutely.
All right, any more questions? I would need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Are you gonna put any dependency into their sign?
No.
The monuments?
He wants an eighty-foot sign, that's what he wants.
No, he's talking about the monuments.
No, no, the monument sign, the, the sign up by the road.
If one comes the other.
The, what the planning commission, do you have that picture, so?
I don't, I don't...
Because I definitely...
Do you want the monument sign?
I think it definitely looks nicer.
I want the monument.
It looks nice, sure. Are you willing to put it up?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll go for it, I like it.
May we do the sixteen?
I think that wasn't gonna be your question, was it?
Sorry.
Twelve.
So, the maximum height allowed is...
For a monument sign based on code regulation, as of today, is eight feet tall, so this would be a variance.
Eight feet?
Eight feet for monuments.
Why even bother?
How tall is our sign?
Okay, wait a minute.
Yeah, we're getting mixed up.
So the pylon, we...
Okay. We write the public hearing notice to be big enough where it is just an overall amendment to a section of the zoning ordinance. So if this was something that you would consider, we could include that in the resolution map. If you would like to allow for a twelve or sixteen-foot tall monument sign at the other location, you could do so.
And this kind of builds on a variance to that, is that what you're saying?
Essentially.
But the twenty-five-foot sign's okay?
That twenty-five-foot tall...
Because it's on the mountain.
Yeah, I remember when we went through the sign ordinance, you're shaking.
Is the monument still gonna sit kind of down in a bullet, as per se? I'm just kind of looking at the corner where it might be, it looks like the land kind of goes down.
I think we're closer to level grade at that point, from what I remember.
I just worry about it, there's no sidewalk on, it's still in the center, so, but line of sight for cars.
I think the monument looks better than the pylon.
I like the monument.
And I think the shorter one will be just fine, in reality.
It's, I think it's pretty close to even grade from the grading plan I'm looking at. What do you have?
Anything I could possibly block that, that the pylon wouldn't?
So then the twelve-foot would be nearly as visible as the twelve-foot.
I think if you'd miss, like, other businesses across the street of Dayton Parkway that would be currently on Territorial Road, I'm thinking like Comfort Matters, Ziegler, those are the couple I can think of that are behind those growth of trees that may be blocked if there's a sixteen-foot sign. I don't know if it'll get blocked by a twelve-foot sign either, I'll be honest with you, I don't know.
So let's go with a sixteen-foot sign.
So just, this is a complicated project.
It's not complicated.
So with each sign, there needs to be findings of fact that justify what the variance is. So we, we've talked a lot about the eighty-foot sign, not as much with the sixteen-foot sign. And so the question is, what is the practical difficulty of why, what justifies a sixteen-foot sign versus an eight-foot sign?
Can you go back to that?
What justifies a sixteen?
Yes.
What's easier to see?
Well, then the...
Look, it's gonna look nicer, too.
What we should be doing is amending the code.
It's gonna look nicer, too.
So, that's what I was getting at, it's, it's, it's now, it's a, our ordinance doesn't allow, and so we kind of have a mess. What I'm hearing is, this can, this can act as a variance for that, or is that not what I'm hearing? Because we're really talking about two code boo-boos, and this was supposed to cover the eighty-foot sign, and now we're talking about tying in a sixteen or twelve, whatever, that's, that's in violation of the eight-foot.
Correct. So I understand that sixteen is twice as easier to read than an eight-foot sign, you know, but then why sixteen, why not twenty or, or ten? What is the magic number? So if the direction is that the code is the problem, then we should be changing the code rather than granting a variance for this?
Well, because then we're gonna be stuck with the pylon. Which I think there's pretty, it sounds like...
If that is, if that is the case where you'd like to see the monument signs be changed, we can bring an ordinance amendment forward within the time before they apply for a sign permit application, so then we would have that basis covered. It's just a matter of direction.
Matthew, when, when is this gonna be constructed?
Next summer sometime.
Yes, I don't have a full construction timeline yet, so...
Not before summer.
I, so here might be a question for everyone, particularly for the two of you. Is there a way wherein we could construct the highway sign, get, get our sign permit in order for the signage for the building and the directional signs to get people circulated through, and then apply for a second one for whatever we decide for, whatever you folks decide for a monument?
Yeah.
Can we do that later?
Yep.
All right, if we do that, I think that, I think that would work for us, and that way it keeps the ball rolling, but we don't get caught out with, wait a minute, planning commission didn't want this, it wanted that, that kind of thing.
So, all right, so we would not put any requirements on this today, which means you could put up the pylon sign. So let me ask you this.
Theoretically, but I think we're sort of...
You would rather have the monument?
Making an honest agreement here, is what we're doing, yeah. So we're agreeing, if you approve, we'll build one of those monument signs.
Build your highway sign.
That staff already has artwork for, and that's part of the proceeding tonight.
So the, or the motion will be that we approve the eighty-foot sign with the caveat that will come somewhere along what size monument sign we're gonna come up with, okay? But he is going to build it.
And part of the variance is to have a second sign.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Did you get that?
I got that.
Got that?
He's on it.
Okay, so we got a motion, and, did you get a second? No. Scott made the motion, need a second. I'll do the second. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I, I hope you go with the monument sign, I think it's a much better-looking sign for the community. But I will be voting no against the, the tall sign. I think based upon the evidence you've shown, I don't think the time limit given to get there is really gonna make a difference at all. And so I don't think it's, neither else, I think it sets a bad precedent for the area. And I look at Maple Grove, they've got gas stations all over the place, and they've got sign allowances shorter than ours, and theirs aren't falling down and crumbling and failing all the time, so I don't think it's really gonna make a difference in your business, candidly, just based upon what we see in the area. And I don't like driving through Rogers where I see giant truck signs, I'm gonna drive across country. Hopefully you don't compare yourself to Love's, because you guys have much better products than they do, but I don't like their signs either. So I just wanna make, make sure you know why I'm voting no, but I don't think we should have the eighty-foot sign.
Any other discussion? Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
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 All those opposed say no?
No.
So that passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you taking a...
You can start.
No, you know what?
It'll take fifteen minutes to get started.
I'm gonna take a five-minute recess here.
Okay.
All right, we're back, and we are... So item N.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item N is, this is a mouthful, so it's ordinance twenty-two forty-four dash fifteen, approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, planning unit development, preliminary plat, I think that's it. So it's an ordinance amendment as well as a resolution. So the project is, this is a Parkway neighborhood. The project is located on the southwest corner of Interstate ninety-four and Dayton Parkway. So the previous project was on the opposite side of ninety-four. Overall, the plan is, or the concept plan is for six hundred and fifty apartment units. What's shown on here is going to change over time. With the preliminary plat, the focus is on the road, as well as, I'm gonna call it phase one, which is a hundred-and-eighty unit building. And I'm gonna go back and forth between, and there's several applications here, so what you're being asked to approve tonight is the comprehensive plan amendment to change the sewer staging plan related to this property, as well as to rezone the property from A-one agricultural to GMU five, Southwest Dayton, I think I've got that number right, as well as the preliminary plat for, see if I got a picture here, oh, I'm gonna skip over a little bit. The preliminary plat for this project, which is specific to the roadway in Lot One, everything else is going to be planted as an outlot, which would have to be redeveloped or replanted later before it's being built on. We have a site plan review specific to the apartment building. Yes, I believe that is it. Again, there, this is being developed as a planning unit development, so with the planning unit development, it is necessary for the council to provide that there's a public benefit to this project that justifies deviations from the city code for certain items. So that gets into the critical issues. Number one is wetland impacts, and this has changed since the packet originally went out last week. As part of the project, or the original project last week, there is a proposed wetland fill in the north area for the road, as well as a future development on Outlet A. That has since been changed to lessen the impact on wetlands. That does affect the planned apartments over on this side, which will then be shifted to the south portion. This really isn't part of the discussion tonight, that's gonna be part of the discussion when this outlot is redeveloped at some point in the future. I just wanna make that as a point of when this comes back as a final plant, it will be a little different than it is currently tonight. Critical issues with the billboard, the city code allows billboards as a principal use of a property. The intent is that vacant land with a billboard cannot be developed unless the billboard is removed. The planning commission was supportive of the billboard staying as it is. So I wanna clarify with the council, if you're, have any objections to the billboard staying as it is, or if you'd like it to be removed. Now, it's easier to just kind of go through these item by item.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Was that a question like for Reno?
Yes.
Oh, that's fine, let's say it.
Okay.
Next critical issue is on tree preservation within the comprehensive plan.
Hold on a second, John.
Yep.
Is there any disagreements with that?
If it wasn't already there, I'd have a problem, but it's already existing, so we're just allowing it to stay existing, and I'm okay with that. But if it wasn't there, I would have a problem with it.
Good.
Great.
Now you heard from at least three of us, and I have a majority.
Well, I heard more than three. Oh, yeah, they're all figuring out.
I can say it again, I'm okay with it.
Next critical issue is on tree preservation, so within the comprehensive plan, Rush Creek goes through this property as, as an agricultural ditch. Within the comprehensive plan, it identifies this area as a greenway corridor, which requires any development to be through a conservation plan and development, so with the conservation PUD, the intent is you're, you're conserving something, something that has ecological value. The developer had conducted a tree preservation study, those trees that are, that are proposed to stay are outlined in green, everything else would be removed. There, there are some sprydeck trees that are going to be saved, but for the most part, the majority, vast majority of these trees would be removed. And I'll say that when this project comes in in the future for redevelopment, this green area will also change. But the question for the council is, should this green area be preserved as a conservation easement? The planning commission was opposed to this, wanted to allow the flexibility of remove trees as the project progresses.
You know, we, we kind of already have, you know, a kind of a tree count thing going, right? So I, I guess I don't see that we need to make an easement.
Can you, this map is hard to see, can you show better where this is, or is this, or can you describe better where, is this up against ninety-four there, is that that dark line?
So this is ninety-four.
An S C off-ramp to the left?
Yes.
Or on-ramp?
This is the on-ramp onto ninety-four. The billboard is right about here, that we looked at before, so essentially, these trees on the corner here is what we're talking about.
And does the apartment building cut into those?
It will... It will likely cut into those. And I say likely because I think the location of the next phase is going to change from where it is today.
Can we choose to preserve a certain percentage of it versus a yes or no?
You do anything you want.
Okay.
But he's going to be planting other trees on the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's going to be over 1,000 trees that will be planted.
Yeah, so, fine. If you've got to move the trees to put the building up, that's what you've got to do.
Yeah.
So, no objection to not...
No objection. I mean, they're right next to the on-ramp.
So, kind of the directions, do not include a conservation easement over these trees?
No.
No.
I don't feel it necessary.
I think that this project, as it has gone through the stages of development, they've demonstrated to me anyway that they are working very hard to preserve as much of the natural aspects of this property as they can. And I think that they've done a good job, and I don't feel the need to put any boundaries around that piece.
Okay.
Means no.
Perfect. The next critical item is on parking. So, what is required for parking is one garage stall unit per apartment unit. That is being complied with. The surface parking is short. So, the code requires one surface stall per unit plus a half stall for every five units. So, this totals 198. What's being proposed is 165. When you add the garage and the surface stalls, they're within 91% of what's required.
Did we ever fix our code after we talked about this 1,700 times?
Nope.
No, so, the reasoning why...
But I'm okay with this. I'll just make this easy. We can talk about it for a day. We should probably talk about it sometime next, right? Council's, you know, Tom up here, but I'm okay with this. Then, that's fine. I just want to make sure it wasn't below, already lower than, that's what I was asking.
So, for larger projects such as this, it's more than likely that it will be done as a planning unit development where there's flexibility in the code. So, I understand, you know, for every apartment project that comes in, they're short on parking. Realistically, if we, unless we have a 10-unit apartment building or something comes in, they're likely to come in as a PUD in which there's flexibility.
I just look at it from the standpoint of, you know, if they're short on parking, it's going to impact their bottom line, not ours. I'm fine with the parking.
Yes, no, I mean, I could still see some risks if it's full, and then, you know, there's emergencies there, and then it gets, you know, people are parking in different spots while plowing, like...
But we don't allow overnight parking during certain times of the year.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I see the risks. I just don't know if it'll get there, but things.
There was discussion more than once at the planning commission about some larger stalls, and that the last planning commission meeting, it sounded like they weren't on the plan, but they're in the plan.
Correct. They're not shown on the plan, but the developer agreed to include it. So, the discussion was, and maybe the developer can correct me, or the architect, of having the wider 10-foot parking stalls that are in the back here for truck parking. So, our standard parking stall is 10 by 20. And if there's an allowance for an overhang that's 10 by 18, what's being proposed is 9 by 18. 9 by 18 is the more common parking stall, but it's kind of a question for, what is the average-sized vehicle that Dayton residents have as a truck versus a compact car?
Yes.
Yes, I'm with Dayton.
Probably one of each, yes.
Yeah.
I need to clarify, they already in the plan, and I have an email from Michael. He wrote a number of posters of buildings, so we'll give you that update.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Happy day.
Name an address.
Michael Elzifon, 17269 Eighteenth Place, Maple Grove. Okay, so, the update on the parking, everybody's good memory. We made some changes that we all spoke about back in January, which was some of the parking coming in and out of the project. And then, we intend to rent to market rate, which means we're going to have some members with small cars and others with large, full-size pickups. So, we've augmenting the plan that by the time we get to a building permit, you should expect that more than 10% of the outdoor spaces are going to be the 10 by 20. And we're going to, Ben and I are going to work on not putting them all in the back, some in the back, some towards the front, you know. So, they're equally, let's say, spread throughout. But at the end of the day, I think you should expect 20 spaces at the 10 by 20. And then, I think you've all addressed, as Matt just said, enough about, you know, the parking count. We think that this number that we have is substantially adequate for a like-and-in-kind product that's available anywhere in the Twin Cities, and we're working well within that context.
I have a parking question for you that's not related to either of those two topics. And sure, hate to delay the conversation, but I'm just, most from curiosity, are you planning for any electric vehicle parking at all?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us more about that?
Yeah, Ben can probably help with some of the specs, but, you know, the bottom line is, electric vehicles are a part of customers' purchases today, and those customers are renting apartments. And so, to some extent, we're going to certainly have outdoor stalls. I had a, you know, great conversation with the fire chief this morning, and, you know, we're going to do everything we can to minimize any kind of adverse risk associated with indoor. And that's where we're at at the moment.
That's where my question came from. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, no problem.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Okay, critical issues on landscaping. So, we have a shortage of ornamental trees by two, and I guess my request for the developers is just to find a place to put those two, as well as a shortage on shrubs. The planning commission was fine with the shortage on shrubs. So, I'm seeing a lot of head nods. You're okay with it as well?
I'd rather have the overstory trees anyway, so...
I would too, yeah.
Yeah. I would, I would recommend, as someone who lives in a new development, maybe some more evergreens and less shrubs even, because the wind blows and then blows the snow over everything, and so you clear your driveway, you clear the parking lot, and then 10 minutes later, it's covered in snow again. So, my one recommendation would be, I'd be okay with less shrubs, especially if you're going to put more evergreens in there, because in the winter, I think the people that live there will really appreciate it.
Right, I concur.
And you will, because you won't be upset. People are plowing, you don't have to plow it six times a day.
Right. For those of us that are on a per-plow basis, we appreciate that reduction.
Is that really it?
That's it.
No way. Okay, so, other items, recommendations from staff, I guess, questions. Staff had recommended, including a sidewalk. So, there will be a regional trail that will go along the west side of the road and then a sidewalk on the east side. Part of staff's recommendation is that each phase of the project be connected with a sidewalk on the interior of the project. Planning commission recommended against this and said it's fine as the developers propose. And then also, staff had recommended not allowing EV charging stations within parking garage. And planning commission was fine with them being in the parking garage. So, just to get clarity on that, on those two items.
Fine with, so, state statute doesn't cover that at all?
I think that...
Gary?
Mayor, members of council, the fire service is extremely behind with EV vehicles. Obviously, I'm not opposed to EV vehicles. I have one myself with a charger in my garage. We're just trying to prevent, and there hasn't, there's been some documented cases of charging cars and whatnot. If we can prevent that, I talked to Mike today, and if there's a way to prevent, put those outside potentially, like Target does or whatever, it's just a step in the direction of trying to minimize having a car fire such as that, because they are so difficult to put out inside of a parking garage. I mean, just a regular car fire in your parking garage is significant enough, but when you have an EV that starts on fire, it's very significant, so...
You just let them burn, right?
More or less.
So, is that a, I guess my concern is, is that we have them all over the garages, residences, but...
No, you know, one of the beauties about the free market is you don't overrate. You allow supply and demand to help drive, and, you know...
And that was my question.
Fortunately, we're not the scenario. This is in Southern California. I mean, you know, where there's substantially more EV. And, you know, I think Ben can speak to also, well, we can't change whether it's indoor or out. What we can tell you is that the way we build our buildings, particularly the garages, they have, you know, very thick concrete ceilings. And so, I don't know what the time, you know, penetration with fire, but let me just say in short, whatever we would be proposing on the inside would be a direct result of looking at the typical number of users that use those cars.
Okay.
And I think the chief brought up, we, you know, spoke, and again, I'm not the guy coming here saying I'm a pro at it. But chief's saying that, you know, there's two issues with the electric cars. There's the charging units, right, by themselves, and then there's the cars by themselves, right? And so, I don't know that always the charging mechanism is really the issue where these things are fire, but the cars themselves. And so, I think, you know, when we speak about what we do or don't do with the charging, I think we have to really look at them individually and what is the, you know, rate per, I don't know what, you know, that these things are a hazard. But I think that the cars are a bigger hazard by themselves than necessarily the charge. I don't expect that we're going to have a whole lot of them, but, you know...
You'd still like some in there, just because your market's requesting.
If you're incentivizing people with them to park outside, then if the chargers are on the outside, it incentivizes them to park out there, which then helps get in front of the problem in the first place. And this is as someone who only drives electric vehicles, so I'm not, nothing against them, right? I think that they're great. But I can see how putting them underground where everyone lives above it and not being able to necessarily put them out quickly could be a problem. So, if you're incentivizing them, not that you'd stop them from parking on there, but you're incentivizing them to park outside, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Right.
Unless it's 20 below.
Doesn't make a difference.
Really?
Honestly, the first time I ever seen, when I moved here from New York, when I was a younger, on St. Louis Park, they had, honestly, I got out in the parking lots where you could plug the cars. They used to heat up the engine core. You know, it wasn't electric, but it was a...
Block heater.
Yeah.
I had one of those in my first truck.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I don't know, but you mentioned that, I think you mentioned at the planning commission, that that's a, that's a three-hour lid on that parking garage. I mean, that's a substantial barrier.
It is, yes.
And the garage itself is also sprinkled, which won't help, I understand, with a lithium battery fire button.
Yeah, it's a three-hour construction, and it's a fully separated building below that garage. It's own technical building, separated from the residential. So, it kind of does act much more safely than a typical residential setup in that situation with a garage where you'd have a charger. And regarding St. G, I can't speak much to that, but as far as where and how often, the percentage of projects, we commonly see them...
Ben, can you move the microphone closer?
Sorry. We commonly see the EV charging stations within garages. Usually, cities actually require a certain percentage go into projects. We usually look around, about 5% of the parking stalls have them. One solution could potentially be future EV charging stations that could potentially give a little time for internal fire. The way you fight fire in EV vehicles is a lot more difficult than typical gas or other fire. So, I don't know if time and technology catches up to that, but we do see a lot of future EV-ready garage situations. But I would say typical number is about 5%.
Mayor, member of council, and like I said, I'm not opposed to the chargers or, you know, or electric cars. We're just trying to, the fire service is trying to get ahead of being that this is a new addition to the community and trying to get ahead of it a little bit. Even with a three-hour separation, this car will burn for days. So, if it was to start on fire, the three hours will help, but it can be in excess of a million gallons of water to pull one of these out. So, just putting it out there, it's not to scare anyone and just trying to prep, if you will. And like I said, I own one. We're just trying to help, I guess, if that makes sense, try to mitigate any situation in the future.
The risk is high. I get it, because in your house, you probably only have yourself and your wife and your couple of cars, but somebody else's car and 200 other people, potentially, I mean, that's just 200 units, like inner people in there for all I know. But, you know, I could see where the risk gets high, but there again, I don't want to deter those users.
So, is the council okay with the EV chargers being in the apartment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two other items, and this is more just for clarity, so I don't forget. As part of this project, there's going to be a temporary emergency access that will be off the site on the adjacent Dayton Creek park, no, Dayton Creek addition, which the council reviewed in October, I believe it was. The intention, so the temporary easement or temporary access will be built from this cul-de-sac to, onto Brockton. Whoever builds first, whether it's this project or Dayton Parkway, will build this emergency access. The reason why this is necessary is that there is an alternative farm access road. It is below the 100-foot or the 100-year flood elevation. So, it's, I'm going to say it's going to work 99 years, but not...
Not one major event, right?
There's also the issue that there's a culvert that we're not sure if it could withstand the weight of a fire engine. The second item I want to draw attention to, you know, so one of the conditions of approval is whoever builds first has to build this emergency access road, whether it's this project or the neighboring project in Dayton Creek.
They split it then afterwards? Or whoever builds first gets separate the cost? How does that work?
Wherever this, so I want to emphasize, this is temporary easement, because wherever it's built, it's going to be in the wrong place.
Okay.
So, when this lot gets developed, this access is going to move somewhere to accommodate the project to the last.
Do you have an estimate on what this temporary access is going to cost?
That's, this one's not to pay for.
Do not.
Oh, the reason I ask is, and maybe this is moot, but, I mean, it sounds like the reason that we're not considering that emergency access, an emergency access is because an engine's going to sink in. I mean, the bridge isn't rated for that.
That's probably the main reason, so I...
And other than the two-hour flood every 100 years, why?
It's actually not land rights either. It's through private property.
Oh, and...
So, there's not a general easement agreement over the section of that roadway?
We don't have access. So, we would need, okay. I'm just, it just seems odd that we're going to build a temporary access, and, okay.
I agree. On to the next point.
So, the next point is, one of the conditions that it requires the developer to, when this outlot, or Outlet A is developed, it requires that the developer include a trailhead, parking area to service the regional trail. And when this went to the planning commission, the planning commission was against it, and so, you know, there's other way. Three Rivers can figure out how to solve their own problems. I believe that we do, the city does have an agreement with Three Rivers to build the trail or find a location for the trail. So, if it's...
To find a location, not to build it.
To find a...
Put a house there if they want to buy, and they'll put it up right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, mayor, members of council, this has been, basically, my job since taking over city administration is fixing problems we've had in the past for umpteen years.
Yeah.
This is yet another one that has come to light. Back in, I believe it was 1998, 2001, sometime in that timeframe, the city council basically said, yeah, we promise we'll do this with Three Rivers Park District for an exchange of, I think it was, land rights or something at that time, as I just said, yeah, we'll build you a trailhead later on down the road. Today is later on down the road, in 1998, in terms of whatever. So, Three Rivers Park District has reached out as part of the beginning of the project and said, let's figure out this one so we can write one more thing off the ship, since I've been fixing nothing but problems since I got here.
Is there a posing commercial there, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a different place you can put the trailhead somewhere in this area?
How much space?
We're running into wetland and flood plain. So, Outlet A is intended in the concept plan for a gas station. So, the thought is, is that, you know, with the trailhead of the idea of 10 parking stalls, that can be incorporated as part of the gas station.
Trailhead at a gas station. Hey, it's been done.
They'll be able to get refreshments.
That's the same. It's been done.
So, we would like, just to make sure the council is aware.
Does it need to be a gas station?
And it can be anything. Okay, does not use gas.
Can we not use a gas station, please?
We'll call it a convenience store.
Sure.
Call it a commercial site.
Call it always.
Yeah, commercial.
So, just want to make sure the council is aware that there is a trailhead requirement. And so, something, some part of this area, doesn't have to be at that location. It could be somewhere in this area, doesn't matter. Has to be a trailhead, some sort of fulfillment.
This agreement we made with Three Rivers, you looked at it?
Nope.
Marty's got some wood chips we can throw in there.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I think with regard to the Three Rivers, I'm not sure what...
Michael, if you could move the microphone back towards you.
I got to tell you, I'm standing up here like an idiot. I talk with my hands all the time, and it looks like I'm a little bit goofy. So, you guys have met, I have two little nieces, right? So, I'm just, you can't believe and you can't make this stuff up, but...
That's okay. It's a good, no worries. That's okay, it's a good, no worries.
She faked it.
While you were sleeping.
I was, I took a nap, I was mad.
I was wondering what.
Dude, he says 8:15, so I'm like, okay.
I'm like, somebody have Paul, I'm like, this guy's got something.
No, and then my wife's like, we don't, she's like, we don't even have nail polish. I have no gas, but I have a half-electric car.
Where did you just come from?
But I talk with my hands and like.
You're having a hard time.
Now you own it, now you're done.
So, hey, Mike, where did you just come from?
Home. Yes, her name is Brynlee and she's.
She's a sweetheart.
Quite well, yeah. She's spiking my milk with salt right now, I promise. It's just ridiculous, but, okay, so Three Rivers, I, I'm not certain what you guys had, let's say, prior to me coming online. I reached out to Three Rivers myself when I learned that they have this regional trail pre-approved from like 2007. And, you know, I tell you, I, you know, kind of look at this from economic, how do we really design this great project, blah, blah, blah. So I've had a lot of discussion with them as early as last week, just telling them that we're coming up here. We didn't, so let me first start with, what I understand out of the dialogue is, they want to put in the trail, they're gonna write the check for their improvements, hard stop, okay? So our problem, our, our project is sort of to say, how can we help thread that? Is it of benefit to the city and the stu-, you know, the residents? And I think all of that is a yes, but it'll be on their dime, and then in terms of this trailhead and, you know, parking this, that, and the other thing, those are like on their wish list and what they want, and we've made a great effort to try to incorporate at minimum, creating a trail from the southern border to the, to the north, and we've done that. What we're gonna do from there in terms of how big of a this and a, what do you call that, you know, stay over this with bathrooms, there happens to actually be enough room up there to probably do it, but we, none of that stuff is finalized. What I've really told them is, we've incorporated a very nice roadway and the road, the trail will take us from, you know, the south to the north. Beyond that, you know, it's gonna have to be justified and fit all of the type of criteria that you'd want to, you know, to make that kind of a commitment, you know, and where that would be. But the most logical, and this trailhead too, guys, can be, as you come up to that land, you know, to the north, let me start with, you, you, the city of Dayton, own that property, we don't, okay? So the property that we're referring to with the gas station, a convenience, whatever, commercial, that's owned right now by you, and it's just to the north of the road, and what we found through some pretty extensive work with the wetland and the mitigation, it's a very, very tough site, right, to be able to even get to a point where you can build some vertical on it, but, you know, but in, so I think that there's a way that we can get something worked out with the county to do something that I think is gonna benefit you, we, the city of Dayton, and they've already made it clear, as would I, that, you know, they can come, but it's a pay-to-play game. If they want to put the trail in, they have to cover those costs, and she said that's fine, they're already approved to do that, and so I think we're okay.
They got nothing but money at Three Rivers, so I'm not worried about that.
Yeah.
They do.
Our money.
Our money, they got nothing but our money.
Right, yeah, well said.
So the, the problem is, is that we have to designate that now, or that's for Three Rivers to figure out?
So.
Could it be on a different property? Does it be on this one? Does it be in this area? Like, what is this actually tied to?
So this is the intersection of two regional trails.
Okay.
And so it makes sense, you know, that's the reason why Three Rivers wants a trailhead in, in this area. So we've had, you know, we had one project a month ago, now we have a second project, and this is an opportunity if the City Council wants to require a trailhead, it probably makes more sense on this project as opposed to Dayton Creek.
Can you put it all the way down to the end of the, excuse me, cul-de-sac, where there's nothing but field right now anyways?
Yes, it's harder to get to, but, and granted, you know, as this project matures, like, the plan is going to change.
Okay.
But the point I want to make is, if, if it's, if the developer's not required to figure out how to fit in this project, then we have responsibility to buying land somewhere else and building the trail.
So Mayor, members of council, I was able to find the email that I got back from Three Rivers Park District, which was a year and a half ago. It said, long story short, the city assessed Three Rivers Park District for road improvements, which Three Rivers Park District is exempt from. The two parties went to mitigation, and Three Rivers agreed to pay $10,000 to the city in exchange for securing a future regional trailhead land at the equal or greater value of $10,000 at a future date.
Doesn't buy much.
$10,000 buys you like what?
Three to three.
Yeah, quarter of an acre, if you're lucky.
But it probably did in.
Six of an acre.
Yeah, it said, at a minimum 15 years ago, maybe 15 years ago, is what she said in the email, so.
So we tried to assess them, who thought that was a good idea? I mean, it is a good idea, it's just.
15 years ago, council, so 2007, '08 timeframe.
Okay, so, so.
Must've been Scott.
Not me.
So we have to come up with some spot that's valued at $10,000 or less, or more?
It's like three parking spots.
Yeah, okay, but we have to build it into the PUD, is what you're telling us?
Yes.
But we don't really care where it goes on the property, as long as it gets on the property. Choose wherever he wants to put it. Put it on that end of that service road.
Yeah. Now, to be clear, you guys still own a parcel, so for me to say it's gonna go on parcel two, what we call parcel two, it's really you guys deciding that, but, in any event, but I don't disagree that down at the end of that cul-de-sac does, you know, that's where the trail heads south into.
Yeah, that seems like a good, I mean.
And so we're working right now on that left parcel. Anyway, the point is, yeah, there's, there's a couple different options that we can figure out to put that.
Well, we appreciate you being able to work on that.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, that's all set.
So, and I would say, it doesn't, this doesn't have to be resolved today, we just need to get it a certain direction, so.
Just an agreement that there's gonna be a trailhead somewhere, and it may be on our property, but, okay.
So lastly, and I probably said this three times already, so one of the things that we've struggled with this project is what is approval through the Wetland Conservation Act, and we're, I'm gonna say, mostly in agreement, but it hasn't been approved yet. So one of the conditions of the preliminary plat is that the project receive approvals for the wetland conservation easement prior to final plat approval. I know the intent is that the final plat would come around in December, a couple weeks from now, for the road in Lot 1, I don't know if that's still the plan. So the question is if, I don't know when this will get approval for wetland conservation, I'm guessing not in December.
No, wait, are we talking about the further?
The north section, so the, the TEP panel or Technical Evaluation Panel is fine with wetland mitigation for this roadway, where there's an argument, or I should say, disagreement, is filling in the wetland north of the road. And so the project has been revised very recently that preserves this wetland, which also affects the flood plain and then creates more buildable, buildable land down here. This isn't going to get wetland approval before December 10th, and the developer's intent is to get final plat on December 10th for the roadway and for Lot 1. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, number one, the final plat is tied to a long string of things that on the development side we're trying to do, particularly in the buy-sell with the previous owner or current owner. Number one. Number two, in no way, shape, or form am I asking you for a final plat in two weeks, unequivocally with no pre-conditions precedent. I'm asking for a final plat 100% conditioned and contingent upon the TEP and the Army Corps of Engineers, which are, which are the two groups that are doing, yes, it's classy, right? I'm gonna mesmerize you.
The interesting part is everybody at home watching this.
Yeah.
They might not be able to see us.
Being recorded forever on YouTube.
Yeah, yeah, no, good.
I have a color at home if you have any.
So, okay, so we don't, so bottom line is, we did, and John was on the call, we've, and Jason and Ben, and there's literally like 15 of us that have been working really diligently post EAW to move to this next, what do we ought to do to make the site perfect? And, and that's this Army Corps and the wetland. So when I talked to Jason, and the way we've kind of structured this is, if we do the, as you'll see, the paperwork would be a final plat, but it's already baked in there, it's 100% conditioned on the approval from both the TEP and the, and the Army Corps. So none of it's gonna get built until we get that, and I promise you, we'll never close on a construction loan or any, everybody's on the same page, and we're all working towards the exact same thing, so that, they started their 120-day thing, like you guys do with yours, and it was 17th of October or something like that, so, point is, this will be a spring approval from them, and we, we expect then to do the, our vertical construction coming out sort of sometime after that approval, so everything kind of fits with a spring build. But we do, we are gonna come in on the 10th for, for final plat and the development agreement, but we've already baked language in that says, you know, we have to bring cash, we gotta do this, and we have to get a personal approval. In the last comment, I would make John, you know, delightfully on a phone call, all 15 of us, and we were just getting ready to close, and everybody's got the happy days and, you know, good stuff, and he nailed it, like, 100% nailed it, and came right out to the state and the, and the TEP, and said, I need to be clear, do you have any problem at all with the roadway portion of the, of the wetland that's being impacted? And they clearly said, no, we have no problem with the road. So I just want you to hear, I was on that call, he did a fabulous job closing it up, and we got kind of a, you know, at least a positive answer, and then what he's mentioning now, subsequent, is Ben and I, in our original drawing, we have some buildings and things up on the north end, as well as, quote, this convenience store gig, and it was stomping all over the wetlands, like, a lot of it. So they put a bunch of pressure, they being the guys on the TAP and the blah, 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 pushing on us to, what's the right word, something first, what do you do, mitigate or don't do?
Yeah, so basically, we, we're not touching any wetlands other than the road now in this current plan, and what it really resulted in is a little bit more buildable land.
Ben, can you move the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
We need to there. So, yeah, we, our current plan, that we've been working on this last week, avoids any wetland other than what it takes to get the road through the development, and that's resulted in a little bit more land, you can see on the west side of that main road, where we're gonna have some townhomes, similar to what you guys saw actually in the earliest, I'd say, yeah, the very early concept plan with like 350 units or something like that, so, yeah, 374, thank you, great, great memory. One less than EAW would require, as I recall. So, yeah, we're, we're looking at that. So from a housing standpoint, we, it's kind of a favorable, but right now, it, it leaves us with less of a plan on that future retail site.
Do we just sell Three Rivers, the entire Dayton chunk then, since we can't build? Say, here you go, that's all you have to have for a buck, build your trailhead. Good luck with the wetlands.
The area is, just for, it is in 100-year flood plain, and I, you might have some block building, park pavilion there, since it's non-habitable, so it might actually be a good use for that area now.
I think at the end of the day, the benefit of it is we end up with a, you know, frankly, I think a stronger overall neighborhood without, with the trade-off, right? We're not, we're losing all this wetland, you know, and the drama that goes along with that, and it gives us more buildable land in the core of our neighborhood, and it, and so I think it's, that's helpful. And the truth is, as you look at the plans and the, how would you say, just the overall condition of that lot that you guys own to the north, it's, it's not just, you know, pour a foundation and go, you got 100,000-plus cubic yard, I mean, it's, it's a very, very difficult site. So I think we look at, you know, you also have to look at kind of present-day value and now, and, you know, that, that land that we now freed up to the left of the, of the road, up until you can kind of see that blue, gives us about 170 feet to the west of the road, and that's all, you know, high value right now. It's not guessing, it's not competing with the guy that just left it, QuickTrip and trying to create, you know, it's, we've got plenty of demand for the product, and, and I think it makes everybody from the Fed to the state very happy that we've, you know, not gone in and inadvertently just wiped out wetland for the sake of building. They said, you know, aversion is the first step, or whatever they say, and so we really pushed ourself a bit, and, and we came out with something that we think is viable, so that's what we're, how our current plans will look.
Avoidance.
Avoidance, there it was, yeah.
So just to summarize this real quick, so one of the conditions of approval is that final plat be not, not be approved until the Wetland Conservation Act approval is, what the developers are requesting, is that approvals be, final plat would be approved with a condition of, I'm gonna call it a lack of approval. So as staff, our, our responsibility is to have a minimal level of risk for the city when the council approves a project, that's always a careful balance, and the, kind of in, in internal discussions, I guess our intent is to have a larger discussion with the council at, at a separate time, so not related to this project, but internally, we have a struggle of how quickly do we push projects through and how much risk are we taking by approving projects before, I'll say, all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed.
If they were to start early, we'd see it, right? I mean, from the interstate, someone would see something going on down there, it wouldn't be unknown to us if they were to start.
Yeah, because the first thing that would happen is the trees would be.
Yeah, so we'd, we'd know real quick if they were doing something, they hadn't cleaned everything up.
Yeah, I don't.
It's all just.
Well, let me save that for a different conversation, because it's a long explanation.
Well, okay.
So, again, what's being asked tonight, so we have an ordinance amendment to rezone the property, there's a preliminary plat, a plan unit development, and site plan approval specific to the appearance of the apartment building, as well as the landscaping and so on. That's it. Now I'm done.
We answered all your questions, you had a motion for it.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, then we can move on.
I'll make a motion to approve preliminary plat and, what else did we have here?
Zoning.
Concept plan amendment.
Zoning amendment.
Comp plan amendment, zoning, and preliminary plat. I understand the, the explanation around the final plat, but we're not dealing with that tonight, so I think what you're talking about will work for me, but we're just talking about this one right now, and so, here we are.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. All right, thank you.
Next time, come agree.
Thank you very much.
I wanna see the red color next time, right, yes.
I'll show you all my secrets.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It'll be spring then, Steve.
Item O.
Okay, so this is a ordinance for to amend the zoning map, as well as a preliminary plat for, plats for Territorial Grove. So Territorial Grove is located on the northwest corner of Territorial Road and East Frenchlake Road, and is consisting of 42 single-family lots. The concept plan was reviewed, I would say, some point this summer, I don't remember what, maybe it was spring. Pulte was also the developer of the adjacent project or territorial trails, and so I think the housing type is somewhat similar to what's on the adjacent property. So again, two requests, one is to amend the zoning map from agricultural, or A1 zoning to R3 residential, as well as the preliminary plat approval. If you had a great presentation by Pulte, I, oh, I even have the same misspelling I did last time, so, yes, so Dean, if you could come up here.
This is not Kent Street.
Yeah.
Is this the same presentation as we signed?
It is. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Dean Lott, I'm with Pulte Homes, we're located at 1650 West 82nd Street, Bloomington, Minnesota. Did you come with painted fingernails, Steve? Mine's all natural. I noticed that as he was waving his hands, I didn't know what to think, I was like, no, that's interesting. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and speak to this presentation. As John mentioned, we had previously gone through the concept plan review process, and what we tried to do by going through that was make note of all the things we heard and then respond to them and try to change our plan accordingly, and we, we did several things. We created a more wide. We created a more wide-ranging appropriate amenity in the form of pickleball, and got rid of the tot lot. We have homes that will complement the existing neighborhood, as John mentioned. We provide trail connectivity throughout the site, and we intend to pay park dedication fees as well. We'll provide a lit monument, we'll have enhanced perimeter landscaping, and I understand, maybe in the report, it says we need to do a little more on the territorial roadside as much as practical. So we'll, we'll certainly do whatever we can do to enhance that. Homes will comply with your architectural standards, and then one other thing that was brought up at the public, previous public hearing is if we were willing to have the HOA for this neighborhood and join the territorial trail, and we're certainly open to that. So one of the things that I've requested is, this is a difficult site, the gas main, the roads, kind of leaving behind an exception parcel, the Olson parcel, we're just taking a little bit of land from him in a purchase agreement. All of those constraints make this a really challenging site. It's small, it's difficult to, to navigate with our homes and comply with the code, but we're doing just that. So what we're asking for, I think there are conditions two and four in your preliminary plat resolution. One condition would be to get rid of the East Frenchlake Road connection. We're asking that that stays. We will lose a, a lot if that connection goes away. And if there's a connection made just south of the gas main easement, we would then also lose that lot as well. And the, this project is challenged financially already. So, I would ask that the council consider the recommendation the planning commission made with regards to the plat.
And if I could just clarify, so staff's recommendation was not to have this access and to have kind of an eyebrow cul-de-sac, which, you know, as Dean pointed out, would be a loss of a lot. So, but again, the planning commission recommended to keep it as it is.
And just briefly, Mr. Mayor, not to sound like a broken record, because it is similar to what I said at the planning commission, but East Frenchlake Road's a local road, territorial Road's a minor collector. It's not uncommon to have access points that, you know, are, are in the proximity that the existing territorial trail to the north and the proposed one in our neighborhood would be situated. The traffic flow in and out of the neighborhood would be relatively light. And then one other thing that I just want to speak to, and then I'll stand for questions, because I know it's been a long night for you already. When we presented the concept plan, we had that stormwater pond that's just in the south, kind of middle-south part of the site, and just immediately west of the cul-de-sac, actually, further south, there you go, that one. That one was configured a little differently, it was a little more oblong, and it was smaller. As we made it through concept plan, we then had our engineers do the stormwater calculations to make sure that we're sizing our stormwater correctly to take all the water from the site and be able to, to maintain the rate, the quality, and the volume, just like we're required to by the rules. So what you now see there is a pond that's actually been engineered and is correct in its configuration. The reason why I bring that up is it makes it difficult to address one of the other staff recommendations, which is to connect the Olson property that's existing to an internal connection on that cul-de-sac. It makes it impossible. The other thing that's complicated, I heard the previous applicant talk about their engagement with the Corps of Engineers. There is a ditch that runs kind of through that pond, right in that general area that's being highlighted, and that pond right now does touch that ditch, and so we're still negotiating the, with the Corps to figure out what we can do there. But as it's designed, that general design isn't really going to change, it might move a little bit to the east, and in any case, there's that ditch there that is most likely Core-regulated, which is going to make it difficult for that driveway to come across anyways. And, and so we're asking that, and Mr. Olson, I just visited with him last week, he, he wants to maintain his access, and so we ask that that request also be honored.
See, get that, if I, if we don't do anything different, that property's probably never really going to change, and it's always going to be that way, and you won't be able to, the chance to be able to sell that and put seven homes on there, something like that, or two homes on there is going to be pretty low?
I think it's going to be low because there is a portion of the ditch that is actually not on our site or in the stormwater pond, and that's going to affect the buildability in that northeast corner of the Olson property anyways. To say that it, it would be implausible, I, I couldn't tell you that.
On heat, need to share a driveway, and I, yeah, I don't see that.
Be very tough. I just want to make sure he understands that if there's no other access to that property, he's unlimited to.
Right, yep. You okay for questions, though? Yeah. The access to East Frenchlake, is that, are you planning on having that divided? What kind of access is it divided?
He doesn't want one at all.
Um, it's, it's, uh, it's proposed to be a full access. It, it could conceivably be perhaps a right-in, right-out.
Yeah, that's not what I was getting at. The staff was proposing that it get a.
Center island.
A center island, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about the cul-de-sac?
Nope.
Oh, right there?
Yeah.
So it, in staff's.
A median.
Center island, so staff's recommendation is to have a center island similar to the, the next street north here.
I misunderstood that.
Oh.
I thought perhaps you were talking about putting a, something decorative in the.
Yep.
That's also in there, yeah.
Okay.
What do you have for, you have enough right-of-way to do then?
I don't know for certain, I'm inclined to say no.
I thought when we originally looked at this, we were going to have access onto East French from, in the gas line area. That, we talked about that.
South of the gas line.
That was part of, I know that was part of the recommendation from the planning commission. The issue is there's not a lot of depth for the gas line to accommodate a change in grade.
But as far, as far as emergency vehicle coming into that development.
If, so.
We prefer one, not, in your opinion, Gary.
Yeah, mayor, members of council, I, I have no issue. The more access for me, the better, honestly. One other thing, too, briefly, on the center island, Chief Enga and I would prefer not to have that center island on that, just from accessibility for us or parking.
You're talking about the cul-de-sac?
You're talking about the cul-de-sac.
In the entrance.
The entrance.
Oh.
I'm guessing the cul-de-sac, too, because if it seemed like the other cul-de-sac just to the west of that, you can barely get around it with one vehicle with that. I could have a, I bet you have a heck of a time getting a fire trucker on that cul-de-sac, because they feel you guys filled it in, and it's so, that road is so skinny right there that I think you'd really struggle. I don't know, I'd rather not have anything in the cul-de-sac. If it's going to be as, as tight as the one is to the west of it, that one's really tight.
Yeah, I agree.
So, Gary, are you referring to the median on the north entrance there?
Yeah, we would prefer, yeah, not to have a center island, if you will, because the chief Enga would end up with parking complaints, trying to get in and out.
But, I mean, we do this with a lot of our developments, are you saying we, we shouldn't be doing that?
The one that was installed going into the other neighborhood, we have had issues with homeowners parking alongside of it, which obstructs traffic right in there. That's the only one that we've ever had issues with.
So that's the one north of this?
Yep.
Mayor's members of council, the reason why that has issues is because the house is right on the center island.
Oh, so we squeezed in a median.
Correct. Which is what we'd be doing here with that one.
Yeah, all right. Yep.
That's how much furniture they have, so, I get it, I get it.
So people are, yeah. All right, so next that one.
I would nix the one in the cul-de-sac. Again, it doesn't look like it's much bigger than the other one, and that other one is very hard to maneuver and a car without any, there's no room to park on the street and get someone past it.
You're saying the decorative island within the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay, all right, because the one you're speaking of is on 110th.
Problem is, they look nice.
They look nice, but they gotta be a calling name there.
The other cul-de-sac that we're talking about was undersized, it's not to our normal city standard. For some reason, it got put in that way, and it wasn't caught. The, the normal-sized ones are enough for those guys to get around, but it also provides a lot of snow storage for public works.
So is this one undersized or normal-sized?
This should be, this should be normal-sized. We have a standard detail for these, so they're.
Okay. My concern is just having been the other one, and see how bad.
It was done back in like 2020, it was not. We made that adjustment with the old chief and Greg Cruz, I believe, brought that forward.
The undersized cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sacs, the dead ends should be cul-de-sacs for turnaround for.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean, yeah. And then they ended up with, yeah, some houses where they got a cul-de-sac in their frame. Okay, so, so we're okay with the.
Well, it's, it's a question for the council.
I, I think they look much better with the median, with the center island, and if this is big enough to handle it, I don't see any reason why not to.
Then I'm okay with it. But on this map, it looks almost smaller than the other one, so if it's drawn towards scale, then that made me a little worried that it wasn't going to fit, so.
So I'm trying to track, because I think the cul-de-sac one is not a concern for us to accommodate, if that is pleasing to the council. I do have concerns about the entrance, because we didn't, that's, that's a new thing for us, and we didn't evaluate that. I think that would squeeze us there.
I'm guessing we're okay with not doing that.
I would go, I would forego it. Okay.
So I think you're good there.
Thank you.
The, sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
But you're still okay with doing that entrance out there?
I would, I would like that entrance to East Frenchlake Road there.
I prefer the entrance be south, and just make a four-way right there, personally. I think that makes way more sense for the development.
When you say south, are you referring to.
South of the pipeline, to make that three-way into a four-way, yep, right there, basically.
So that would lose.
He's going to lose a house.
Mm-hmm. He's probably losing two houses, I think you lose two houses.
I was going to say, he loses two houses, yeah.
Because with the R, whatever you want to call it, the R cut on the top, if you made that into a bump ball cul-de-sac, or whatever you want to call it, you lose one lot. And you'd also lose one lot right there where your cursor's at, that would be a straight across, so you'd lose two lots.
It's two lots he's going to lose, which we originally talked about having it right in the pay-per-ane easement. Now we're saying that doesn't work.
We cannot, you know, so we did, we did contact the pipeline, and we aren't able to put it there based on the depth of the pipeline at that spot. We did contact them, and they, the answer was, we wouldn't be able to do it there.
There was also a concern if you, if you made it of, of an intersection there, that cars would just shoot through to get to the, to the old, I don't know.
Existing.
I guess I'm, I'm fine with where it is.
I'm okay with where it is, I think we should have one there, though, on that, on that road someplace.
Would I agree with that 100%?
So what, from the cultist perspective, because I may or may not agree with that, I want to know why we think that, and I'm more on the engineering side of things, because why do we think it's needed on this? If this came in as a third addition to the previous development, you wouldn't have had an access. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Because an emergency vehicle coming all the way around there, it's going to take another, what, three, four minutes to get there? And we're talking about three, four minutes is the, the difference between life and death.
My reason I don't disagree with that either, but the reason I, I would add to that is because if this was being built all in one phase, how long has it been since we finished the last phase?
So it's.
Sixteen, yeah.
Five, six. Twenty-one or twenty-two?
Yeah, so what's going to happen is it'll be a bajillion construction vehicles coming through there, and so this allows them, as they've got one in and one out, the construction vehicles have no reason, in my mind, to go through the existing neighborhood at all, and they can build it without that. And knowing that, as we learned, a semi-truck full of lumbers, you could go into 177,000 vehicles driving down that road, that's a lot of wear and tear on existing roads, and so I'd rather they use the roads that are not completely finished to do that.
Sure.
So if it's, if you'd rather have a temporary access that goes away, and chief's fine with it, sure, I, I think it makes sense, and the expectation from my side is that the builder is aware is that the construction vehicles will not be using the current entrances to go in or out of the, the development as it exists today.
May I speak to that real briefly, Mr. Mayor? It's common for us, what, because it's, obviously causes us heartburn, too, when that happens, because we get the complaints, and we want to make sure that we're, we're keeping as many people happy as possible. So what we'll, what we would do is create a, a map that would, that we would share with all of our vendors, and it would, you know, we would say, this is your construction route. And, and in a pre-con meeting, make that very clear. We'd try to do that on all of our projects, because the, the concern is universal.
Perfect. And I hope that when, if it doesn't get followed, and someone decides not to follow the plan, that they reach out to the cities, the city can take the steps needed to reach out, do you like it.
Absolutely.
What other period of time do you anticipate that this neighborhood takes to build out?
You know, it's, it would develop, we'd close on it this first quarter, most likely, first or second quarter of this year, do the roads and utilities the remainder of the year, build the model homes for sale in '26, and I, I'm guessing 18 months, 20 months.
Listen, you're having it all built?
Yep.
Bought out, I should say, at that point.
Yep.
The other question we got a lot from the residents is, what steps are you going to take to keep the existing trees kind of on the border of the current proper, the current development and the new development?
You know, one of the exercises we're going through is, in order to comply with the code, we're trying to keep as many lots as possible right at that 62, because feet wide, that gets us the seven-and-a-half side yard setbacks. If we have any that are 62.5, or 63, or 64, we then have to go to a larger side yard setback, that doesn't work for us. So what I told my engineer we're going to do is we're going to make those adjustments. I think what that will do is slide, we'll be able to slide some of those lots and create a little extra space there between the existing and, and our proposed, and we, we can, we should be able to vegetate that or landscape that if there's a desired buffer there.
Okay. And then, is there enough space, I mean, so you give them the tot lot, which is good, because there's one a block away from there, but you're thinking pickleball court, whatever problems are going to put in there, are you able to fit like a pickleball court and a half basketball court in there? I think a pickleball court hits a unique, a specific group of people, you need to find a specific group of people.
Yeah.
I think a basketball court hits a specific group of people. I see a lot more kids on basketball courts, and I see a lot more adults on pickleball courts, and not that there's anything wrong with that, but you've got a tot lot, which is, you know, young, and then you've got a pickleball court up here, and you're missing that core.
Yeah.
Middle years, and I think a basketball court would help hit that, and I think based upon if everything's a scale, there's room in there to also get a basket, half, not a, a half basketball court up there for some kids to play.
Sport court. Mr. Mayor, to the question, I, I think what I would say is, yeah, we could, we could look at doing that if I could also get a, a credit for that additional cost against the park dedication fees that we're paying.
Is that going to be a city park, or is that going to be a?
It would be an HOA-maintained park. That would be, I mean, because that pickleball court, that area would be HOA-maintained.
You're looking for a credit for the additional cost past the pickleball court?
The pickleball court is, is our expense. If we're going to add another amenity that we weren't expecting, I guess I would just ask for that consideration. I think we're, right now, we're budgeted at paying another $188,000 in park fees among, or past the trails we're putting in and the pickleball court. So I would just ask for that consideration, if we were going to add an amenity.
What do you remember the price approximately when we priced out a half, I don't have my notes, they're all from at home, there, I have written on a piece of paper, but I don't have it with me. When we looked at it recently, was it like 60 grand?
I think that.
For half basketball court? It wasn't all.
I think it came in around 58,000.
Thank you.
Fifty is what we see.
I'd be preferential to that, then you get a full wider range of outdoor amenities for people, it makes sense.
Is, is question two, have we done that in the past, for giving credit for an HOA park as opposed to a public park?
It's weird, but.
Not normally.
Yeah.
We can't, but we have, we have it in the past.
The other option is you place it.
I would say, but you pick one or the other.
I'll say the other option is you place it in such a way you can get both on there, and then if the HOA wants to add it later, they could come in, add it later, correct? They could use HOA dollars and pay for it themselves. If they decided they wanted a half basketball court there for fifty grand, they could do it, as long, I would just say, at least leave the space if nothing else, so that both can fit there.
Okay.
And, yeah, map it out and show that they'll both fit there and then-
That works.
If they want it, they can easily add it.
That works.
Or you put a hoop next to the pickleball court and then you got it.
That's, if that's what they, if that's what they wanna do, then they can do that too.
A Google search brings up quite a bit of options.
Yep, I'm okay with that too. If the HOA wants, that's a better idea. If the HOA wants to manage it, then let them manage it.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I have a question just for the council. Is there a trail proposal on the south side of that development being constructed or just easement?
There's-
Or neither?
So on the, I think on the plan, it's neither. Um, this is intended to be a, uh, Three Rivers Park District Regional Trail. So I think we need to have more discussion of how that fits within the grading. Uh, there's a condition of, of approval of connecting this, I can't remember if this is a sidewalk or trail that goes north-south-
That's a trail.
-to the entrance on, it's off the map here, on a territorial trail. So that goes beyond the project, uh, but does connect one sidewalk to another.
Correct.
And so I was just gonna ask about that. One of the staff recommendations, number two, is a 35-foot landscape buffer along there?
Uh, yes. So, um, in the comprehensive plan, this is guided or identified as a, I think I wrote it as a collector. It is not today, but it's guided to be a collector. Uh, the intent is to have a landscape buffer along collector roads.
Okay, but what does that do with?
Well, as challenging as we have a wetland that's in there, so I guess the thought is as, to have that- Stormwater pond. As much as practical of having that 35-foot, uh, buffer area, so, because you see a lot of developments, and I'll use Sunday as, as an example, is you're gonna have a, a landscape buffer along major roadways so that you're not seeing the development so much. Uh, that was part of the conversation when we had workshops of what in state and world, it's hiding the development.
So you wanna put a bunch of trees and stuff in that?
Thirty-five feet. There's not a lot of-
Within the 35 feet or past 35 feet?
Within the 35 feet, so.
So that's a bad intersection to begin with. We wanna cram a bunch of trees in there?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. I'd rather have, I, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I'd rather have the-
Light open.
The light of sight to that intersection than have a bunch of trees crammed in there so you can't see what's coming.
Sure, and, and that's the whole core, so, yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, same, well, yeah. What's the 35-foot do to the, the pond as it sits?
I think the pond would be within that 35-foot easement, so you're just gonna have a hole, hole to look through. There's only so many places to put the pond.
Yep, no, I get that. But there's gonna be a hole, well.
How does that easement impact the existing homeowner?
I couldn't tell you from the scale of where 35 feet is.
Wow.
I mean, there is some area, you know, along here, I, I couldn't tell you if this is 35 feet or not.
I think we can just put an easement on his property. So I think we should.
So when, when we talk about his property, he, he is part of the development.
Not this, this piece is?
This is, yeah.
How's that work?
Well, it's lot, it's got a lot and block number.
I, I, Mr. Mayor, I, I think what I would suggest is that Mr. Olson's retaining ownership of just a smaller portion of the land that he owns. So, so trying, trying to add in a, um, a buffer and a trail that would also go across his property is not something I have control over as the developer. I believe we did leave space, though, for the Three Rivers Trail, future trail. We, we, I would struggle to see how we make that connection across Mr. Olson's property, which we don't control, and then across, um, south of territorial trail. Our original conversations about that trail always, um, were from the perspective of providing space for it, but that Three Rivers would build it at some point when they, they determined to do that. So it wouldn't be a city expense, but it wasn't anticipated as, as a development expense, so.
And, and the intent, if the developer builds it, the intent would be that they would be provided credit towards, uh, trail fees.
I don't know, for, for me, I would leave it as the, you know, allowing access for the trail and not dealing with the buffer.
No buffer.
I don't know that it accomplishes very much.
Right.
Yeah, Mayor members of council, I think we should at least get the easement from the property, so we have that in the future.
Well, for the trail.
For the trail, yes.
The property he controls. Not Mr. Olson's property.
Not Olson's.
So, well, it's still part of the development.
How can it be? It's-
It's not.
It's deeded, it's done.
It's gonna be Olson's property.
There's three lots that are part of this development, so this, this is Mr. Olson's property is part of the development.
It'll be a platted lot within it. Um, we've had similar, um, final name was what, Edgewater, I own gardens, had the same, or some of them became this. Actually, the, the Pulte development immediately west, uh, territorial trail had the same situation on one of the sub-roads. So it's a larger lot that will just be whittled down, if you will, and, and become a smaller platted lot. Um, I was just gonna make, mention that there is additional right-of-way being dedicated along both roadways that do accommodate trail within the right-of-way, the, the extent of both, both legs.
That's on Mr. Olson's property as well?
Right. So it'd be across his as well. So there's an additional-
We wouldn't need additional easement?
There should not be an additional easement, there should be enough room in the right-of-way.
Oh.
Similar to the-
I just wanna make those up with the trail, that was my concern there.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't, I mean, if we go to him and say, oh, by the way, we're taking an easement from you, I appreciate, say, I don't think so. Okay, well, we're covered with the right-of-way.
So for, for my clarity, if I can just summarize some things. Uh, the council is supportive of the street as it is shown, so with this full access and no island-
No island.
Correct.
Yep.
What else? The council's supportive of not recording a landscape buffer along east territorial.
Correct.
Um, the trail, I guess the question of, do you, do you want the developer to build this connection now or wait till Three Rivers connects it?
Wait till Three Rivers?
Wait till Three Rivers.
I only have one question on that. So there's gonna, just so I understand, there's gonna be a path that goes-
Yep.
Down French Lake Road east.
Yep, and then dead ends.
It's just gonna go nowhere.
Correct.
Where if we have him completed over-
Then it connects to this.
Then it connects to the other trails, because we try to avoid dead-end trails, just like we, you know, that's a, in our trail system, we try to avoid dead-end trails. And so we'll be intentionally created at end trail then. Or if we have him put the trail in, he gets the, the credits back for the trail, so.
The credit makes sense, but east of, yeah, that, where you, uh, go west, from there on to the-
Territorial Trail.
Yeah, is, there's not a trail there.
No, no.
Well, who's gonna build that trail?
Who's gonna build that?
So the developer would. It's an off-site improvement, but again, the intent would be to, to provide credit towards the trail.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay. So, okay.
Doesn't really cost him any extra money, because it's gone, it'll be covered by trouble that keeps it out. It's not a financial impact to the builder, but then we don't have a dead-end trail that ends on territorial, which would be a bad place for dead-end trail.
I get where you're going with it, no?
Yep, no, I understand.
So there's a trail already on the west edge?
There's a trail on the east?
Right there, right there.
There's an easement right here, this is where they're talking about, right here's kinda.
Yeah, there's a trail.
There is a sidewalk that runs currently territorial trail to the-
So we wanna complete this loop and go up to there.
Yeah, Mayor members of council, yeah, there is a trail that currently exists on territorial trail on the, with the east side of the road that is currently just dead-ended-
Yeah.
-right into territorial road.
Yeah, no, I think it, it makes sense.
I would agree with that, yeah. But there's nothing on the east side of East French Lake Road.
There will be.
There will be.
On the west side of East French Lake.
West side, yes.
There will be as part of this development.
Yep.
Yes, there will be a trail done all the way down to the edge or to the intersection of East French Lake Road and territorial road, that is correct.
Okay.
Is the council supportive of that?
If we, yeah, he'd just get credits to the, and there's enough credits there, right?
And giving credit for completing the trail, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Then, last question I have is on, uh, the, should there be an island within the cul-de-sac? So this is a, I'm gonna call it a standard cul-de-sac bulb versus, uh, what we have in territorial trails is more of an eyedrop? It's probably a, alright.
Yeah, kinda is an eyedrop.
You prefer it, right?
Teardrop.
Teardrop.
An island.
Teardrop, eyedrop.
I just want to make sure there's enough room for a vehicle to park there and people to get around, because the other one does not have it.
Yeah, the one on the north side of the project does.
It does.
Okay.
There was two, there was two cul-de-sacs built in that development, one was to spec, one was not quite to spec.
Can we go back one item, real quick? So the, the trail, that'll be built to Three Rivers Park standard, so that way we can go back to them and get refunded, because they'll take it over like always, I'm guessing.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So it won't cost us anything either.
True, yep.
John, I did have a few more questions about this, about these recommendations. I don't know if you were gonna, um, so four, we were already chopped, right? Four was splitting that into three lots?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
And then I was confused about, uh, five. That lot, um, it looks like I, it looks, is it just drawn incorrectly, the setback or what?
Um, yeah, so, um, in the R3 district, for lots that are greater than 65-foot wide, there's a 10-foot side yard setback. If it's less than 65, then it's seven and a half feet. So the, the plat is drawn, um, showing you all the seven and a half foot setbacks.
Okay.
I think the developer has looked at it and can accommodate it.
One more question I added, and this was getting back to one of the letters that the residents sent in. And this isn't just limited to this one, but we, we do occasionally get these outlots and they become weed patches. How do we, and I know a few of these outlots, we've sold to neighbors, which works out well, because, no, they can deal with it. Do we have?
A lot of it's particularly over the pipeline in this case, correct?
Yep.
A lot of it is, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, do they become weeds slash wildflowers or what?
Well, I'm gonna say, different people are gonna have different opinions. Do you want a pristine golf course lawn or do you want, uh, everything to be left there in the wild?
Well, yeah, my concern is it becomes really neither. It becomes this, this-
It ends up overtaking the path.
Roughly garbageing.
Mayor members of council, the current, uh, the territorial trail development has it maintained by the HOA.
Okay.
The HOA maintains that area.
And so then it's up to the residents?
It's up to the residents to maintain that area, so we would just, that, I, my assumption would be the same thing on this development would be, the HOA would then maintain those areas that are over the gas line, no different than, um, in the territorial trail.
But wasn't the letter basically saying that the quality that they received it in was never to a quality that the HOA should receive in the first place? And so they've been stuck paying a lot of money fixing something that was never properly taken care of in the first place?
They did not receive the letter.
I think that's what I got from the letter, was like, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars trying to fix what Pulte left us and it was not good, so please don't let it happen again.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Hit me. Um, so, if our VP of Development was here, he'd speak to this a little more eloquently, but I had, uh, followed up with him on that. And I think to John's point, there are, are kinda differing views on what is left in appropriate condition. Uh, one of the things we talked about, you know, the gas main easement is something that we have some challenges there. We can't do plantings, we have to minimize how many utilities are, are on there and what kind of intrusions. We would, we would probably, though, uh, seek to get the gas main company's permission to do like a native plant seeding for that, so at least it would be native plants that would grow, which is, my understanding is what was done with the easement in territorial trail. Some people see that as visually pleasing, some people don't, and so there, I think, were some differences of opinions, but there were many attempts made to try to appease concerns, and I know some of those folks never felt satisfied.
Well, I, we can tell you from experience, because the city's been trying to convert a park over to native planting, and it has not gone well for us, and we are constantly maintaining it. So my question is, is, is that the right fit, knowing the pains that go along with that? I wish someone from the neighborhood was here to answer it, but I think before the final, we should get some, hopefully some input from them if we can, because if we can, if they'd rather see it sodded and they're gonna maintain it and water it, then maybe that's the correct route. I don't know what the correct route is, but we've tried, Marty, for how long to get Leather's Park to look nice, and every time I drive by there, it just looks like, no offense, dirt.
Yeah, I mean, Leather's Park has been a two-year thing, it's gonna get reseeded next year, so. The, the thing with a lot of these outlots is, I'll just say from experience, is they get, they get, um, seeded, um, for vegetation, but then they're not seeded with a seed mix, they just got rye grass in them. And so a lot of that time, that doesn't happen and it doesn't grow in, and so that's where I, I personally see it on a lot of different things, that's where the issue is.
Okay.
And it, it could come down to the city being more stringent with landscape inspections, which we haven't been able to do before, um, until this last year, because we haven't had, uh, anybody to do those properly.
Sure. Okay, well, I'm out of questions.
I don't have any more.
Any else have a hand? Okay. I need a motion in a second. So, uh, you've already got the exceptions to-
Yes, we're, we're removing, on the preliminary plat resolution, we're removing items two, four, seven, no, two, four and seven.
I'm looking at the, I, so I'm looking at the staff recommendation. Page 256.
Okay, I, I'm, we'll get the resolution two, two sixty-eight, two sixty-nine.
Oh.
Oh.
So I think we would remove one, remove two from your staff recommendations, keep three, remove four, keep five, and keep six. So that's at the cul-de-sac islands.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Provide lot four, block five, and Three Rivers Park District Regional Trail, uh, along the south side of the development. We would remove the ghost plating, the thirty-five-foot land, landscape buffer, and remove, we would remove or moving. A hundred and eleventh avenue.
Yes.
Along with the, a median part of it.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Based on the condition?
Based on all them conditions.
All that stuff.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Curious five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, let's beat this next one for a half hour.
Uh, which one? So we're skipping over P?
Yeah, whatever you'd like to do, council.
Well, I.
P is essentially just the continuation of the workshop.
Discussion.
If you guys need more time to discuss, that's why I put it on the agenda. If you don't need anymore, and you're good to go, and you're okay with the four twenty-five worth of cuts, we're moving forward.
Well, I think the majority of us are.
Think so.
We're good.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I, I just don't wanna get to December tenth, provide this giant presentation, and then you're like, "I don't like any of this stuff," and now we're back and scroll on, so.
Well, I'll just let you know now, I don't think the four twenty-fives are, I think the, the, these. So again, are we gonna open this up?
Go ahead.
All we're approving is cutting the four twenty-five, right? When we're in green space with the conversation, we have to cut the four twenty-five, and based on the cuts that we talked about today, I'm okay with that.
That gets us to the four twenty-five.
As it stands today. But we haven't hashed out how we're gonna spend the four twenty-five, or the, the remaining money, which I think probably is gonna be a discussion unto itself, but the question is, what do we want to achieve tonight? 'Cause if it's just to approve what to cut, then I think we're there.
Mayor members of council, I need to have clear direction for what you need on December tenth, so I need everything that you need.
Yep.
And so a portion of it is what we expected, what we needed to cut to get to the tax rate that was, were, you know, desired by the council. Other part is, are you okay with them that's currently in the budget? If not, let's, please have a discussion on it, so I have clear direction, so that when I provide a TNT presentation on December tenth in two weeks.
It gets approved.
It's approved, and not just, or, yeah, at least voted on, otherwise we are going to be meeting on Christmas Eve or some other date after that.
So with what we just discussed at the work session, are you, you good with it?
I'm kinda live.
You?
I don't have any, we don't have any choice, really. I mean.
You do have choice.
Well, yeah, kinda, I mean. I, I think that four twenty-five works.
Okay.
That's about all I can say about it.
Okay. I, I just, I have a problem with the, the capital equipment number.
The equipment is the issue. That's the main issue. I mean, but I think that's another conversation. I mean, do you, I don't have any problem with his mower. He's gotta have a mower. The, uh, the backhoe deal, I don't like it. I mean, 'cause we're not trying anything different. It's always, this is what I want, and I mean, and, and I'm not.
I, I would argue on that one, Scott, 'cause we wanted to have some larger piece of equipment that had a lot more snow blower and whatever else, and we said, okay, I think we can live. I think we can live with something smaller. We figured if we could trade something in, can we did it? So it's not just staff saying, "No, this is what we're getting, that's it," but, um, we are trying to work with council and understand the dollars are, you know, they're all around. It's just trying to figure out what works.
I'm just trying to see if we've got three here.
Oh, there's three, is there?
Okay.
I'm sure there's three.
There's three.
I don't know, I, so, I got one, I got one, I got two, and then.
Where are you at?
Where am I at? Well.
With the four twenty-five and with the arrangements that were.
I, you know, I have said enough times, I have reservations around adding firefighters this next year. I think that I'm, you know, talking to the law on that one, so I'm gonna move past it. And the, the four twenty-five, I guess we still are, you know, it gets us, it gets us fifty. And we are still putting something forward toward the ladder truck, which was kind of my mental condition around going from the fourteen to the sixteen percent when we originally talked about it. I don't, you know, we're not going quite two percent. That would have to be, what, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand to get that, but, um. So I think in the, in terms of compromising, I've gone pretty far, and I, I will live with this.
Can I ask what's included, what's left after we've cut the four twenty-five? So someone's gonna motion something, right, that we cut the things we talked about, but as far as I see it, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page. That includes the two full-timers and the thirty dollars an hour, or it does not? I, I.
Sounds like it does.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
And I don't know that, I mean, my only concern is.
Nobody will budge off of that, so I don't know.
I, I just think it's premature, too.
Hasn't changed since April.
Then I'll motion that we approve with the cuts that we, so you had a motion, we should.
No, I don't, I don't need a motion. I just need to make sure.
Direction.
I just want good.
So that, then I'm good with where we're left.
While we, or we left it, you had at least three votes.
Okay. Sounds great. Anything else?
I think you knew that before the, the meeting even started.
Well, but, yeah.
I, I did not. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I came into the meeting, I had, um, probably two votes for one, two votes for other, two votes for one something else, two votes for this, and I did not have a majority vote, 'cause.
So right now, we're at eleven point two-four percent, correct?
That is correct, yep, with the four hundred and twenty-five thousand, those were the cuts that were discussed tonight. That's correct.
Well, that's certainly good, sixteen.
So we have to go back to the two items removed, right?
Yes, we have item C and item J.
Can we, do we do them together or separate?
I don't know. J came out of here. I don't remember.
I would, I would recommend passing them individually.
Individually? Okay, so item C. Approval purchase loader and tour grounds master equipment.
And that's in the budget that we just talked about?
Correct.
In the long-term plan, that is correct.
So we can either talk about it or get a motion and, uh. I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Matt, second, okay, discussion. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I say aye, just to get it over with.
All those opposed, say no.
Noted for the right.
That's five, zero. And item J. Need a motion in a second on that one?
Go ahead, you seem to do it.
I'll motion.
You're gonna do it anyways.
Approve. Okay, I need a second.
A second.
All right, discussion.
This is with the, uh, safety dollars, right, this deal?
Mayor members of council, this is not, this is, um, a reduction on the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar rescue that should've been purchased, so I took the four hundred and fifty thousand and reduced it to two hundred thousand. Hundred thousand for a rescue that is being taken out of the public safety dollars, and this hundred thousand, um, which is a grass truck, is been budgeted from the capital improvement.
The vehicle that this goes on is already ordered, is that correct?
Uh, we have that vehicle here currently. Uh, Councilman Fushon?
We have that vehicle here already?
Yes, you approved that, uh, a couple of council meetings ago.
Two F three-fifties trucks?
Grass skid in order for it. So if it's already here, why is it on here?
The vehicle's here.
The vehicle's here. The skid's.
This is the order, the, basically to put the piece of machinery in it.
In it. Oh. I guess you gotta, once you start.
And, uh, service?
Once you started, you gotta finish it, I guess, so. Pretty much.
Okay.
You knew that to be from the day one.
All right, no more discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Curious five to zero. Okay, with that, if there are no objections, we will adjourn.
I'm ready for bed.
I am ready for.
We're adjourned.